Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, April 26, 2021, Meeting of the Salina City Commission. Before we call the meeting to order, I'd like to request confirmation from staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided.
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz. Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Would those who are able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
The United States of America, to the Republic.
All right. We'll start off with the fun business, the awards and proclamations.
3.1, the day of April 30, 2021, is Arbor Day in the city of Salina. Doug Rudic, Tree Advisory Board, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Mayor. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, an Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, reduce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our home, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Salina has been recognized as a tree city, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting practices, I would now ask that Mayor Hodges sign the proclamation?
Yes.
You want to read that? You have it up there?
Yes, I, yes, I do. Now therefore, I, Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor of the City of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Salina, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this 26th day of April.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to come forward and receive your signed proclamation and do... You, I should have asked this before you came up, but if you return to the podium, is there, are there any things that are specifically going on for Arbor Day that folks can...
April 30, they're going to be planting trees at the Kansas Wesleyan campus.
April 30?
Yes.
Okay.
That's coming up this week. And look back, I've only been on the board for a little over a year, and unfortunately, because of COVID, we've not really had opportunity to meet too much, except by a Zoom meeting one time. I'd hearken back that where we live over in Parkwood Village, HOA, two years ago now, we replaced 15 trees that had to be cut down in that neighborhood. So every little bit we can do in a different neighborhood, I think it's really, really moving forward.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Rudic, for your service on the Tree Advisory Board. And is there, is there any place where people can get more information if they'd like to go out and help do some of that tree planting at Kansas Wesleyan? Would that be best to contact Kansas Wesleyan?
Well, I don't, probably call Mr. Lamer.
Okay.
At the City Forester.
Okay.
He probably would have.
Great.
More information.
So Brett Lamer at...
Yeah, exactly.
Parks and Rec Department.
Right.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rudic.
Pleasure meeting again with you.
3.2, the week of April 26 through April 30, 2021, is National Work Zone Awareness Week in the city of Salina. Heidi Black, Administrative Assistant, Public Works Department, will read the proclamation.
Hang on just a second, Heidi, because I think that we all need to get our vests on. Should have done that. And here's where I get it turned inside out, and I can't get it twisted out, but...
Looks great.
There we go.
I don't have a vest, but I'm wearing yellow.
We'll have to get Commissioner Ryan's vest to him, so, so everybody can see him coming and going like us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Whereas construction work and repairs to our roads must be done with traffic on them, putting both motorists and workers at risk every day. And whereas workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild, and maintain roadways so motorists can safely and efficiently travel throughout Salina. And whereas in Kansas during 2020, two people were killed and 400 people were injured in work zone-related crashes. And whereas nearly 90% of the people injured or killed in work zone crashes each year are motorists, making work zone safety important to all citizens. And whereas 62% of these fatalities and injuries were caused by inattentive driving, following too closely, and speeding in construction zones. And whereas to reduce fatalities and injuries, motorists must remember to set aside distractions, be extra cautious, and give work zones their undivided attention when traveling. And whereas, safety on the roads is a shared responsibility, and we all must do our part to keep our roadways safe. And whereas, the city of Salina is dedicated to enhancing work zone safety for both road workers and motorists. Now therefore, I, Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of April 26 through April 30, 2021, as National Work Zone Awareness Week in the city of Salina, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in work zone safety and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life while working under these adverse conditions. And witness whereof, I hereby, to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 26th day of April 2021. Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Black. And I know we kind of giggled when we put the vests on, but these vests, we don't take them for granted, nor do we take the people that are working in our, our work zones for granted. And thank you all so much. I see a number of folks here today. Thank you very much for all the work you do, because a lot of times it's unrecognized that we really appreciate you guys doing this very dangerous, but necessary job. Is there anything that's going to be going on further in the department or that you're doing for, to celebrate this or to bring awareness to this?
Yes, actually, general services employees from the streets, traffic control and flood control work groups will all be participating in work zone safety training provided by one of the street supervisors who recently completed training and certification in work zone safety from the International Municipal Signal Association, or IMSA. The training is designed to help our employees understand the importance of and requirements for setting up safe work zones throughout Salina in accordance with the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or MUTCD.
Thank you very much. Would you like to come forward and receive your signed proclamation? All right. That will bring us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for anyone to speak on an item that's not appearing on today's agenda. I, first of all, I thank all of you for wearing your masks and ask you to please remain masked when you do approach the podium. And we have set a three limit, three-minute limit on questions and comments, and ask that you state your name and where you're from. So at this point, I will open it up to any citizen who'd like to speak. Don't know if, do we have anyone that's here virtually? No, okay.
My name's Joseph Miniman. I own the property at 621, 623 North 13th Street. I do not live here in Salina. I live in Peoria, Illinois. I filed a petition to vacate West Grand Avenue between 13th and Broadway some years ago. I still haven't got a document for recording purposes. All I get is what I call a runaround. The deputy director, as well as your counsel. I want to know where the document is so I can record it free and clear. Nobody objected to my petition to vacate the street. Period. You got questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
I think that I would probably defer to staff's knowledge of, of this. I mean, I apologize if, that the process has not proceeded as efficiently as, as we would like it to, but I'm not...
It doesn't matter what's supposed to have been done. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 that's fine. That's fine. At any rate, I guess all I have to offer you is to...
If I may.
Yes.
There was a process, including going to court. There's been a resolution from the city's perspective. Mr. Miniman doesn't necessarily agree, and we'll restate our position for his benefit.
There's nothing to agree on. You owe me a document to record so I can get on the tax roll.
It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing point of dispute that's gone to court.
That was in there. You weren't part of the action. You're proposing ordinances?
No.
I'm not buying neither do the attorneys I talk to.
All right, Mr. Miniman, thank you for bringing it to the governing...
I'm tired of waiting on it because I want to do something with that property. I'm entitled to a deed from the city. They vacated it, they've admitted it, and there's nothing to answer except getting a proper document for recording purposes. And they've stalled me and given me all these different, I don't even want to go into detail of what they've told me yet, but I will if you want to. Got plenty of documents here.
Well, now, I think now that the governing body is aware of it, we can, we can follow up on it and get a little bit more information at a time when we can truly gather...
How soon will that happen? This has been going on for three or four years, five years, and these people do not want to listen to me. They don't think I know anything about real property. Yes, again, I've forgotten more about real property than most people learn in a lifetime. And so is the people I deal with. How much time are you going to give, need to respond? Get some, get back in touch with me?
I tell you what, I would like staff to update the governing body, because this is the first time, unless, I hate to speak for my colleagues, but this is the first time that I've been made aware of this, so...
I'm not arguing with you, man, but it's been hanging around now for two, three, or four years.
Well, I tell you what, why don't you give us a week to have staff give us, get us up to speed, and we'll pursue it from there. So I'd say in the next two weeks.
Two weeks? Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak today?
Norman Manoswan, Kansas. I wonder if the governing body is aware of President Biden's 30-30 agenda. It's a land grab. It involves counties in Nebraska, and it involves counties in Kansas. The 30-30 plan is an executive order to protect 30% of the land and 30% of the oceans by 2030. They're proposing to take our property. Private property rights is an issue. I think the governing body, both the city and the county, need to get involved in this to get it stopped. So I've got more information at home. I forgot that one, but I brought this one. But I attended the meeting April 11 in the community up there, Lincoln County. They're having meetings all over the state and in Nebraska. So I could ask one of the governing bodies up here, do you're aware, you're in the land business, Mr. Hoppick? Are you aware of this?
I've heard about it, but haven't researched it.
Well.
I know about as much as you said.
Somebody needs to look into this, because they're going to take all of our property away from us.
Thank you, Mr. Mantle. Is there anyone else who would like to speak today?
Hey, guys. Chad Farber here in Salina. I've kind of made it a tradition, I guess, over the last several weeks to come up and give my opinion about this whole ridiculous mask mandate that we still have going on. I know you guys have made the decision that we're going to push it back till the ending of the school year or looking at Memorial Day, that type of thing. But my question is, why do we even have a mask mandate in the city? We live in a state that does not have a mandate. We live in a county that does not have a mandate. Our Board of Health of Saline County does not have a mandate for masks. And by the way, that's the county commission, which I'm sure you're aware of. It seems like the two commissioners here on this board are the only two that are pushing this through. And, and I was curious as to why this was, this was the topic that you chose to dig your heels in on. And so I paid attention very closely to Commissioner Davis and Ms. Hodges, Commissioner Hodges, Mayor Hodges, I apologize, to the response a couple of weeks ago. And I, I still don't, or still did not receive a satisfactory answer as to why this mandate is not repealed. Not the masks, the mandate part of it. You want to wait till the end of the school year, but the school board has their own decision to make as far as who wears masks and who does not. You wanted to wait till the end of the school year, but CDC is coming out with new guidance this week that says wearing a mask outdoors serves no purpose, and it is not recommended. Children are rebreathing bacteria on their masks, and it's, it's almost abusive to the children out at recess that they're having to wear a mask running around on the playground. Just this past week, an athlete fell out, track and field, not here in our local area, but fell out due to his mask restricting his flow of oxygen. And so I would ask this board to reconsider again, put it back on the agenda. Now that we have more information, I looked through your ordinance, and I have it here in front of me, and several of these reasons why we had the masks put in place or the mandate put in place, several of those no longer apply. And so it's time to revisit this. I know everybody's wanting more vaccines done, and I've got that, you're wanting 70% of the adult population and so forth. But Saline County now is refusing some of these doses of vaccine because we can't fulfill the appointments for everybody or for all of the vaccine doses that we have. I would ask that you just revisit this, put it on the agenda, and look at it again as a commission. And, and is there any way to find out how many fines or how much we have collected in fines due to the mask mandate ordinance? Is that, is there any way to find that out? Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farber. Appreciate it.
Dalton, City of Salina.
Could you give your, could you give your last name as well, please?
Dalton McDowell, City of Salina. Is there any way, when AIPAC was over there doing the streets between 10th and, I don't know how far south they went, that you couldn't get south, you could not go west of 9th Street without running into a roadblock because they had all the roads blocked and they weren't even working on them? Can this not continue? Because it's kind of annoying when you have to go all the way back out to get around, and they're not forewarning traffic that they're coming up to it. They're blocking it at the intersection. You have to back out because there's no forewarning on those, on that. And that is the streets they did by the railroad tracks within the last two weeks.
And I'm, just so we make sure...
Between Walnut, which is Walnut and the jail, 10th Street, somewhere in between that, by the railroad tracks.
Is it still blocked now?
I haven't been, I haven't had to cut through that, so I'm not 100% sure, but I think it's kind of annoying that they're blocking them if they're not working on them, and they don't have no forewarning. You have to back up to your next, to the block before. There's no forewarning until you get right up there.
Thank you very much.
For clarification, the expectation is that there is a traffic control plan in place in advance, so we'll follow up and see what happened there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skreg. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. Well, generally, at this time, I actually preempted you, Mr. Skreg, and I do apologize for that. We've been having a weekly COVID update, and so we'll go ahead and we'll do that now really quickly, if that's, if that's all right.
Sure. Mayor and Commissioners, as you know, I'm providing information based on Friday, so one week at a time, based on information that was available on last Friday. With respect to new cases, there were 29 compared to 38 the week prior. There were 64 active cases compared to 52 the week prior. 5,996 recoveries, which is 18 more in the last week. There were four hospitalizations compared to three the week prior, and there was one death in the last week. I think I've shared with some of you, or part of the conversation that you had at your last discussion of the face mask was also an identification, a discussion of demand for vaccine. So I shared that with the Saline County Health Director and asked for his input on what he felt the demand for vaccine was. His response was that vaccine demand still seems to be present. His assessment is that it has fallen off significantly. And turnout at the last few vaccination clinics has been extremely low. They didn't conduct a mass vaccination clinic last week. On Vaccine Finder, it indicates that eight of 10 providers in the area have vaccine on hand. Saline County's vaccine allotment from KDHE has been paused since the county still has vaccine on hand. It hasn't been used. Looking at the county's website this morning, it indicated that 32% of residents had received at least one dose. And the Health Director reported that based on the data from the last couple of weeks prior, approximately 2% of the population was being vaccinated each week. However, he did note that with no mass vaccination clinic last week, that he expected the numbers, once they come in, to be significantly less than, than 2%. And then he, at the 2% rate, had projected, if there was continuous interest, it'd be about 19 weeks to get from where we are to a 70% vaccination rate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skreg. I needed to clarify a comment that I made at Citizens Forum last week. I got an email inquiry. And that is about the efficacy of the COVID-19 vaccines. As a total, Moderna and Pfizer have about a 94% efficacy. Johnson &amp; Johnson and AstraZeneca have between 75 and 84% efficacy. And evidently, I didn't make that clear in the meeting that I was speaking specifically about COVID-19 vaccinations and not vaccinations as a whole. So our thoughts go out to the family that lost a family member this past week, and we'll keep, keep moving forward. All right, that will bring us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 19, 2021. Item 6.2, approve change order number one for the 2017 Water Main Replacement Project, number one, to Smokey Hill LLC of Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $16,302, and revise the contract time for substantial completion from February 15, 2020, to October 30, 2020. Item 6.3, approve the following items for Phase 2 of the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant, project number 70019, Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, project number 2917, A, authorize city manager to execute the certificate of partial substantial completion, and B, approve change order number one to revise the substantial completion from February 8, 2021, to August 13, 2021. Item 6.4, approve resolution number 21-7949, appointing members to the library board. Item 6.5, approve resolution number 21-7953, authorizing a license agreement with Lighthouse Properties III, Inc., for the placement of a privately owned sculpture in the public right-of-way.
Thank you. Are there any items that a commissioner would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Want to give Commissioner Ryan just a second there, too.
No, ma'am.
Thank you. I would like to, I'm sorry?
I'm not a commissioner, but you do have a revised license agreement at your seat, so it'd probably be appropriate to take that one off and have staff advise you of the changes.
Okay. And speaking for myself, I would like to remove item 6.3. So that will leave us with item 6.1, 6.2, and 6.4 for approval on the consent agenda.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve consent agenda item 6.1, 6.2, and 6.4.
Second. You have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.4. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Guess we'll go ahead and start with 6.3. And that was the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant, project number 70019. Thank you very much, Ms. Tasker. Couple, I just had a couple of questions and a couple of comments on the water treatment plant. First of all, I'd like to thank you and the representatives who are here to give us, give the commission a tour of the new water treatment plant out south. And your work looks amazing, and in visiting with staff, I think this is the largest capital improvement project that we've, that we've ever completed. And you did it with an exceptionally small contingency, which wasn't used up in its entirety. So I want, I think that deserves some recognition, and thank you for working together so well as a team. The question I had, and I think in taking the tour, it was, it was answered, but I still thought it was worth asking because it wasn't clear to me from the staff report. On some of the, the, the proposed change orders, CPO1 and CPO2 specifically, those are things that ended up being done, but just not at a cost to the city. And when I kept, sometimes, you know, when you keep reading something, and the more you read it, the, the, the more you get a little confused. So I just wanted to confirm that CPO1 and CPO2 were the ones that were provided, but not at a cost to the city.
That's correct. There was much discussion about them, and as a team, we made arguments back and forth as to whether they should have been in the project and if they made sense. And the contractor felt that they could do that workforce at no cost and, and that it made sense to the project from an operational standpoint. So no cost for those items.
Okay, great.
Three and five?
Yeah.
What?
Three and five also had no...
Yeah.
Tree was more of an issue of, we thought we needed retrievable quill, because we heard others talk about it. But as we researched the process, it was not necessary for our particular installation. So that just fell off of the plate as a desirable change. And five?
And was the overhead doors not?
Uh, that's the overhead. We, we looked at those doors and the cost seemed substantial. And what we determined to do was to wait and see how often we had to open the doors and if they were difficult to open. And we've determined about once a month and they opened very easily. So good decision to not include it. It was something we thought if we needed, we'd do it later.
Thank you.
But we feel we don't need that at all.
Um, and then the other item I had a question on was a term that I'm not familiar with. Um, and maybe it's common in the construction industry, but I just didn't, hadn't seen it, which was partial substantial completion. And excuse me, I've, the, um, it was windy out of the water plant.
It was.
And dusty.
And dusty. Uh, partial substantial completion is a term that's allowed in our, our contract documents. And I would say that in previous experience, I saw it more in a wastewater treatment plant where you might get a process started up and you'd be ready to use that process and still building next steps. In this case, we're looking at that partial substantial completion because everything is up and as you saw, ready and we can produce water. Uh, what we are waiting for is the surge tank to protect from the surge, uh, in case of a power loss. So that's something that would come later, but for the most part, the entire plant's operable. From a city staff standpoint, we felt important to get it up and running and start, uh, new facility. There's always bugs. Never, never does everything work as you planned. So to get those bugs worked out and be ready to have the system full in operation and know how to run it by the summertime when we had more demand for water. It was just an opportunity. It was kind of a win-win for both of us to get a jump start on testing it. And we've had a few bugs that we've worked out.
Uh, yeah. And so the partial substantial completion then allows us to go ahead, get contractors paid and that sort of thing.
That's correct. And it lets the retainage be paid because those, uh, individuals have done their job and met their obligation and hold their money for another six months. Um, Mike would probably have to talk to a few of them because they'd be upset with us. So it allows that to go forward. So that's a, a plus for the subs. It's done a great job, as you saw today.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Ms. Tasker? Any questions or comments?
None here.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action. Do we need to take two separate actions or can we take one since it was consolidated under the consent agenda?
I think now that you've, uh-
Take, removed it, we need to, uh, do it two separate actions? Okay.
Mayor, move that the, that we authorize the city manager to execute the certificate of partial substantial completion for Phase 2 of the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant to Burns &amp; McDonald CAS Constructors LLC, Aslina Joint Venture, dated March 9, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute the certificate of partial substantial completing, completion for Phase 2 of the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes 4-0. It takes us to action item number two.
And Mayor Hodges, I move, we approve change order number one for Phase 2 of the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant to Burns &amp; McDonald CAS Constructors LLC, Aslina Joint Venture, to revise the substantial completion from February 8, 2021, to August 13, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve change order number one for Phase 2 of the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes 4-0. All right, which takes us to 6.5 and the revised license agreement.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Brad Anderson, Director of Arch and Humanities. The, uh, two items that the, uh, that the city manager made reference to that changed since your packet was distributed on Thursday include, um, a, uh, a detailed, uh, listing in the license agreement in terms of the insurance requirements. Those were specified by the, uh, risk manager and, uh, uh, completed with, uh, both city clerk's help and, and legal review with that. And so those are now included. And that, uh, certificate of insurance will be, uh, included shortly after the completion or adoption of this license agreement. Uh, the other were, uh, exhibits, uh, attached to the license agreement that included a map, uh, uh, or, or a location, uh, of where the current sculpture, uh, base is. It's not a, uh, it's a flat six by six area that's, that's outlined in, uh, the map in your updated packet. And, uh, and then a legal description of the property, uh, of the hotel. So I'd be happy to stand for any additional questions that you might have about that item.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you. Um, and I would like to just let, um, people who are tuning in know that this is, uh, since it was removed from the consent agenda anyway, this is a sculpture tour piece. Thanks to Commissioner Hoppick, who heads up Sculpture Tour, um, that's going to be staying in our community at the, at the Homewood Suites. So thank you very much.
Yes, as, as outlined in your, in your packet, it, it's great that the, uh, private sector is stepping up to help up, out with, uh, the, the public display of sculpture. And, uh, it's nice that the, uh, city engineers had the foresight to create additional pedestals for this kind of, uh, partnership. So we're thrilled to, uh, have this added, uh, to the, it, it within the community's collection. So.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Is there any, um, are there any questions or comments from the public? And I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I move, uh, approval of resolution number 21-7953, authorizing a license agreement with Lighthouse Properties III Incorporated for the placement of a privately owned sculpture in the public right-of-way.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Mayor, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 21-7953, authorizing a license agreement with Lighthouse Properties III, Inc., for the placement of a privately owned sculpture in the public right-of-way. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes 4-0. Um, which takes us to item 7.1.
Item 7.1, Aslina Media Connection Agreement Discussion.
Oh, yeah.
It's a little warm.
It is. Although, you know, it's nice to be able to, to, to pick us out in the crowd. All right, Mr. Wood, I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. Um, just about two years ago, the City Commission started to have some discussions about the performance of Aslina Media Connection in relation to their, uh, contract for services, uh, that they provide, uh, and video services, uh, for City Commission meetings. And they do some, some other, um, alternative services as well outside of that. But the, the main concern has been, uh, with performance, uh, related to City Commission meetings. Um, so at the time, i- in June, we had some discussions and, and that resulted in a reworked contract, um, with Aslina Media Connection. And, and the rework contract, uh, included some more, uh, specific stipulations about the, the work that they do. It included some additional reporting requirements and things like that. Um, and, and, um, the provision for termination for that, um, agreement, uh, said that we needed to provide six months' notice, uh, for them i- if we were going to terminate that agreement. Um, so a year from then, uh, so June 2020, I'm going to fast forward a little bit. June of 2020, we had another discussion. Um, and at that time, uh, the City Commission, um, requested that we extend the service agreement, uh, to June of 2021. So we extended the current agree, the current agreement, um, for an additional six months. Um, at that time, uh, we, we kind of said, let's, uh, provide additional time for Aslina Media Connection to make some improvements with the, the video, uh, services for the, the commission meetings. Um, we had an additional conversation in January of 2021, so just a couple of months ago. And at that time, uh, the Commission directed staff to, uh, send out an RFP to see if there were any alternate service providers that were interested in taking on the service, uh, providing, uh, services for the City Commission meetings. Um, and they also directed staff to take a look at what it would cost or what it would take for us to take that service on in-house. So in March of 2021, we sent out an RFP for, uh, video streaming services. Um, we, uh, sent that out in the Aslina Journal, also sent it to several, uh, different providers in the area. We got, uh, two, uh, responses. Uh, one was from Swagat Productions. Swagat is a national provider. Uh, they provide a turnkey solution. They would, uh, come in, install new cameras, and they're actually a remote provider. So they would, um, do all the work that's typically done on-site, uh, remotely. Um, and then we got another, uh, response from Eagle Communications. Eagle Communications is headquartered in Hayes, Kansas. They have a local, uh, media production operation that's here in Aslina. Uh, they, uh, would come in and use the existing cameras and software, um, and some of the stuff that they have, uh, working across the street, um, provide an employee onsite, um, and, and manage the recording and casting of those meetings. Um, Aslina Media Connection did not, uh, turn in the submittal. We had several meetings about that with them. Um, and, and really, um, they, they did, they didn't provide a, a full, um, submittal, but they did put in some information, uh, an expression of interest. They certainly are interested in continuing to do the service that they currently provide. Um, so you can see that, that information is in the packet. Um, just kind of a, a breakdown of, of the cost. Uh, we, these costs are a little bit different because some companies would have some additional upfront costs. So Swagat, uh, they, they couldn't utilize the current system, so they would have to provide new cameras. So they have a, a higher upfront cost and a little bit lower annual cost. Um, Eagle Communications could come in and use the existing equipment. So their upfront cost isn't as high, uh, but their, uh, additional service or their, uh, their annual service would be a little bit higher. So over a three-year time period, uh, Swagat would be $365,000. Um, Eagle Communications would be $193,000. And I have Aslina Media Connection listed in here at, at $660,000. And I will say, um, you guys have an, an email from Aslina Media Connection where they kind of, um, aren't happy that I put $660,000 in there because they do provide additional services above and beyond City Commission meetings. I have no way of breaking that out, uh, to know exactly what they're spending on, on this, uh, this service specifically. So I listed the, the entire amount. Um, I'm going to go ahead and talk about in-house servant service as well. Uh, as directed by the City Commission, we have, uh, developed a plan, uh, for bringing this service in-house that would entail hiring a new employee. Uh, that, that position would work in conjunction with our current computer technology staff and our computing, and our community engagement coordinator. And we haven't filled that position, uh, just yet, but we are looking to do that in the near future. Um, they would manage the recording and casting of meetings, maintain the hardware and software systems, um, produce and edit, uh, City of Aslina-oriented educational and public relations videos. Uh, we foresee that they would, uh, maybe go out on-site, you know, we'd be able to see what's going on with the city staff, attend training, um, you know, just kind of get a, a better view of what's going on, uh, with the city, uh, overall. Um, and that would be in conjunction with the, uh, community engagement coordinator. Um, annual salary costs for that employee, uh, we've projected that to be around, be between $35,000 and $60,000. Um, still have to hammer out exactly what we, what skills and qualifications we would need them to, to be, to bring. Um, so haven't exactly figured out the, the cost it would be for the employee. Uh, but we do expect the entire budget, uh, for this position. And this is including all the meetings that are held in 107B and then, and doing some of the additional things that they would do with the community engagement coordinator to be around $100,000, maybe a little bit less than $100,000 annually. Um, now there are some things that we just don't know at this point, so that could be higher i- if we, uh, you know, get into it, um, and we determine it's going to take additional staff. There could be additional part-time people. Uh, as it currently stands, the way that we've kind of figured it, there would be some additional work that would be placed on computer technology, uh, to help with the system, maintain all the software and all of those things as well, uh, as a new employee that would, uh, physically, uh, flip the switch and run the meetings and do the casting. And then also the editing on the backside. So, uh, making sure that our agendas are matching with the meeting's, uh, video and all of those sorts of things. Um, so I just want to talk a little bit a- about Aslina Media Connection. They certainly have in the last year, uh, they've done a lot of things to do some upgrades. I mean, all the equipment in the room is new. They've got some new equipment across the street. And, and while it has gotten better, uh, we still seem to have problems, uh, that are just, they frequently happen and they're unexpected. And we have a, a lot of problems trying to figure out what that, what the problem was or what the, what the, the basis of the problem was and, and get it solved. And, uh, so I'll, I'll give you an example over the last, we've actually had six meetings since we've come back in person. And, and in three of those meetings, we've had issues with audio, video, uh, just, just things like that. Sometimes it just pops up. Um, and, uh, most of the time, we're able to get those things fixed, but we just never know when it's going to happen. And we don't really have confidence, um, that long-term, we're going to be able to continue to have meetings that are cast in a way that it's accessible to the public. And so, and that's obviously why we're having this conversation today and why we've had this conversation five or six times over the last couple of years. Um, so here's just a couple of options. The first option is, uh, we just continue to do what we're doing. We allow the current agreement with Aslina Media Connection to continue in its present form. Uh, to do that, there's no action necessary. And if we don't do anything, the contract just continues to roll. Uh, it rolls till the end of the year and then it just picks up in the, the same manner that it did before. We would need to provide six months of notification in order to, to make any changes. Second option there is to, is to provide direction to staff regarding, uh, any desired updates to the agreement with Aslina Media Connection. And, and I'll tell you, at this point, uh, we don't have any new recommendations on how to make this, uh, work any better. If we did, we would certainly, uh, bring them to you. Um, but we've tried to revise the, um, the agreement and, and we still continue just to have issue after issue with the casting of the meetings. Um, option three would be to choose to enter into negotiations with one of the alternate providers. And if you plan to do that, if you, if you're interested in that, uh, we would recommend that we, uh, work with Eagle Communications. Um, they have the technical capability to provide this and they have staff, uh, in the area that, that could take it on already. Um, and they do have the ability to do off-site meetings and recordings. That's something I didn't mention about Swagat. They, uh, they are strictly, Swagat would strictly be in this room. It wouldn't be anything off-site. Um, Eagle Communications has a, their own production company. They have their own cameras. They could go off-site. They could film off-site meetings and, and be able to do some of those things. And they can also do some production of, of other videos, you know, other city-related videos. If we wanted to do a newscast or something like that, they could provide that, um, service. And the last, last option here that we have listed is to direct staff to bring the service in-house. Um, and if that's the preferred, preferred option, we would, uh, you know, continue to develop that plan and bring back some action items, um, here in the next couple of weeks. Um, right now, uh, the current agreement that we, that we have that runs to June 21st, uh, if we are going to part from Aslina Media Connection, we need to provide notice to them by May 31st, uh, that we're going to make some changes. Uh, so that'll be a, an action item that we would have to take up here in the next couple of weeks. Um, I do want to say that both, uh, options three and four, if we are to part from Aslina Media Connection, there are some additional costs that we just don't know about right now. Um, right now, our stream is picked up and it goes across the street to Memorial Hall. And then it is taken from there to Cox Communication. We would have to bring that pipeline, uh, to the City County Building. Um, I've got Cox working to give me kind of a preliminary estimate on what that might cost. They contend that most of the equipment that's across the street that's operating now doing that could be moved across the street, but there may be some additional things and costs in moving that. And that would be solely at, at the, um, the city's, uh, cost. Um, I have been talking with the county about this and I think we can work out an arrangement with them. And no matter what, uh, direction we go, we'd be able to work something out with them. I think they would, uh, um, you know, they're, they're willing to work with us. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh, Aslina Media Connection certainly has, uh, several board members, uh, that are here. Um, and I think they're willing to speak if you have questions for them. Eagle Communications has a rec, a rep here, uh, that I think would be willing to answer any questions. And I will, uh, just leave it up to the Commission, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wood. Um, I'm going to look at, uh, fellow members of the governing body. How would you like to, um, handle this? Would you like to go through each proposal individually and, or?
I have some questions specifically for Mr. Wood.
Okay, let's start off with our questions for Mr. Wood then.
Uh, the problems that have come up with the audiovisual in the last several weeks, are those problems that would occur no matter who was providing the service? And second part of that, are they problems that have to be solved onsite here in the building? Or is it something that somebody remotely would be expected to handle?
That's a, a, it's a great question. And I think part of the problem with this is that we don't really have the oversight to, to manage to that level. So I, I can't tell you, it's not my equipment. We don't have people that, that, that do that. Uh, and the issues we have in the past, so, um, as we came out of COVID, we had a meeting and it, we did Zoom and it, we, it was lights out. And I'll tell you that I, um, was very involved with Aslina Media Connection. Scott Gardner was very involved. Our staff was involved, uh, computer technology. Point that way there down the hall, uh, county's computer technology. We tested and tested and retested to make sure that that worked. And we required that. I mean, I, before we went back live, we said, we're going to test this. I mean, before we went back live, we said, we're going to test this. We want it to work. Well, then we changed a bunch of settings between week one and week two. And as you recall, we almost had to cancel that meeting. I mean, it was about the most uncomfortable I've been in a really long time. So it's, you know, it's hard to know what all the issues are. We know there's some technical issues. I think that they've done a lot to upgrade those, but we still, I mean, we have all this new equipment. And yet, three out of six, there's just been issues.
Were the problems with the first three meetings, the reason I ask, I mean, sitting here, the audio seems to have been great the last three weeks. Of course, I'm not watching it on TV, I'm here.
Well, and that's the issue. You don't, the audio in the room is not necessarily what's going out. So last week, there were no issues. The week before, we had issues with audio and the video stream was cutting in and out. And there's no, I don't know what the problem was with that. I don't know that we ever actually got a resolution on or an answer to what the issue was. We just know that there was an issue. The first week was changes in settings that happened between week one and week two and no testing. I mean, we didn't test it out to make sure that it worked after we changed the settings.
If I could clarify a couple of things, you used the term lights out. I think you meant that in a complimentary way.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Honestly, after the first meeting, I thought, we don't need to have this conversation anymore. I mean, it was just, everything was great.
And then you also said that we made changes, but when we say we, do we mean city staff or do we mean Salina Media Connection?
Salina Media Connection, yeah. We've not done anything without, the city has not done anything out, not in conjunction with Salina Media Connection.
Right, and if the direct line to Cox comes from this building as opposed to Memorial Hall, is there still a connection from Memorial Hall to Cox? Or is it, you know, just one wire that has to be in one place or the other? And the reason I ask is there are two channels.
And so I did ask Cox about, when I had a meeting with them, I did ask about, they would prefer to have the stream that goes to the cable channels be in one location. I think there is a possibility that they could split that and do channel 20 from here and channel 21 from across the street. But I think there'd be some additional costs and I'm not sure how much that was. They were not excited about doing that split when I asked them that question.
And is there a rough estimate of how much Eagle Communications would charge? I'm trying to think of an example, if, I don't know, what if we broadcast remotely? Well, let's say if we had a citizens forum on, I'll make up something, on the pickleball court. And we wanted to have a citywide meeting, they would then?
They would pick that up at an hourly rate. So, and I believe it's $75.
Yeah, it's either 55, I think some tiers were 55 and some were 75.
Offsite recording is $55 an hour, video production is 75.
Yeah, $55 an hour.
And that's for live recorded, that's not necessarily live broadcast.
That's going to be my next question.
I think we could make that a live broadcast. Yeah.
And it would be on them to figure out how to broadcast it. We wouldn't have to supply any.
And Eagle, just to be clear, Eagle does this in other communities. So they record meetings in Hayes for Ellis County and for the city as well. So they do these, this service in another community as well.
Record them or broadcast them live?
Both.
That's all, thanks.
Again, we're not sure of viewership, correct? We're not really able to get hard numbers on those, is that correct?
No, that's correct. I think when we first reworked the agreement, we did require additional reporting with the intent to try and figure out what the viewership was. So they do give us social media views, YouTube views, those sorts of things. There is not a good way or good method of finding out what the viewership is on the actual cable channels. So all we have to go on is the reported numbers that come back in those monthly reports.
If we were to bring this in-house, we would be able to do live on Cox, also do live on other social media outlets at the same time?
Yes, we would.
Live.
And Salina Media Connection does that now as well. I mean, they're also live on different platforms, but we could do whatever platform we decided was appropriate. So we could do Facebook, YouTube, any of those.
One other question, if we were to bring this in-house or go through, let's say Eagle Communication, we would still have the ability to replay those at different times, correct?
Yes, we would manage the schedule.
The schedule, thank you.
And just if, this is Commissioner Ryan to follow up on that, then we would have an archive of all those meetings?
Yes, we would manage an archive as well.
So the archive would be on the city website, not as it is now on Salina Media's?
Yeah, either on a city website or on a third-party website. I mean, we haven't hashed through those. Hopefully, at some point, we get a new website. I'm projecting we get a new website, we should have the capability to do all this through that.
And Eagle Communications' proposal would use the existing camera system and closed system hardware? Is that, is all that equipment physically located in this building? Or is some of it under Salina Media Connection's assets right now?
So some of that, some of that would be located across the street and I can't tell you what that would be. I don't have an inventory of it. And that's something we would, if we decided to go with Eagle or bring it in-house, we'll have to do an inventory and figure out what it is we have, what's usable, what direction we would need to go for that. But our current contract, our current agreement with Salina Media Connection does consider all the equipment that they have. So everything that Salina Media Connection has purchased with city dollar, actually, everything that they've purchased is considered to be a property of the city. If this, if our agreement was to terminate, with the exception of anything that they could provide documentation saying that they purchased it with money that was not city money. So if they had, you know, a grant or something that they purchased pieces of hardware or whatever and they can provide that, then that equipment would continue to remain Salina Media Connections. But everything else is property of the city.
Thank you, that was my next question.
So it's possible that we would have to repurchase, not re-purchase, we would have to purchase?
Certainly is.
All right, I guess the only question that I had for staff. I know that we've talked about agenda software as being a need for us in the future. And I didn't know if the agenda software that Swagat was talking about is something that's just specifically for the video production of the meetings or is that some sort of a?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would meet our needs. We really want a full agenda software management program. There's, they may have some things that help you, you know, put it on or marry it up with the video, but they don't have the full-on package that we want. I mean, we want something that will help us create the packet and do all of that and they don't do that.
Gotcha. All right, well, let's go ahead and we will?
May, one added comment. You as a governing body for a couple of years now have understandably expressed considerable frustration with the difficulties we've had covering the meetings. And I think the staff report touches on it, but I just want to be clear that I think staff's made every effort that we've been able to identify to communicate that concern, reduce that to writing, create written expectations. And then we've committed considerable staff time and resources to try to help troubleshoot it as well. And so I think we're to the extent that we are able to identify, to be able to engage in the current format to address the concerns you've been bringing to us. It's, they're a service provider at arm's length that we have an agreement with. That's why this is kind of framed up as we wish to continue that service agreement or not. We're not in a position to oversee and manage and they're very volunteer-dependent, which I think is commendable, but it also contributes to some of the difficulties. And so we're bringing this to you to try to provide you an alternative that might help meet your expectations. And the only way that we know that we can build some accountability and oversight in that we then can be answerable to you is as you express your expectations to us.
That prompts me to ask another question, either from Mr. Wood or Mr. Scrag. Do we have any contracts that have specific performance clauses in them? I.e., you know, if, you know, if 95% of the things are going well, great. But if we start having issues, that there's a financial penalty or anything like that? I'm just, I, I'm, I'm, I just, I was curious as to, you know, whether that?
The most analogous thing I can think of is what's commonly referred to as liquidated damages. And so if a construction contract has a deadline and they missed a deadline, there's an agreed-upon penalty per day. I suppose you could take a format where there's a financial penalty for each meeting issue that arises or each meeting that's not covered in full.
Thank you.
And did think of one other question. If this was in-house as opposed to any of the other services, is this envisioned to be a one-person show? How many people does it actually take to produce what we're doing right now?
Well, in part, the reason we waited, or the reason I waited to fill the engagement coordinator position was to figure out what our expectations were related to this. Not so much, more so to make sure that that position description and the skillset that we hire in is a good fit. So if we bring it in-house, the expectation would be they would have a skillset that they can manage and oversee it and be a backstop as well as video production and website management and those kind of things. So I think it primarily would be the dedicated person whose time is committed to attending the meetings and making sure that the recordings occur, which, you know, at most is probably 20 hours a week. And they've got time for video production. The engagement coordinator is a backstop. CT technical staff would be a resource in terms of troubleshooting, equipment installation, that type of thing. We have noted that, you know, Jacob and I've had a conversation that if this goes well and the expectation, and then on top of that, you know, they're out covering a water break and doing a video about what it means to fix a water break or a sewer break or police training, whatever the case may be. That could generate heightened expectations and we want more of that. And that then could mean the need for additional staff, whether it's part-time or otherwise.
But for a meeting like this, just one person, is there any technical support that we don't see through the window right now that's making sure this meeting is being broadcast?
Only when things go wrong.
Yeah, I mean, primarily, there would be one person, but certainly the computer technology staff would be engaged with making sure that the hardware and the software was where it needed to be.
We've got pretty much our questions answered from staff. I guess I would ask, to ask the vendors to come up individually and we'll start off with Salina Media Connection? If there's anyone here from Salina Media Connection that would be?
Good afternoon, commissioners. First of all, I would like to clarify the fact that Salina Media Connection did not fully respond to the request for proposal because we were specifically told more than once by more than one person that we did not need to do so because they pretty much knew our operation. So we opted to provide the expression of interest to continue. So I just want to clarify that for the record, please. So I'm Nancy, I'm sorry, Nancy Klostermeyer. I'm speaking as the director, as the chair of the Salina Media Connection Board of Directors and also as a member of the interim management team. And I've alluded to the fact that an email was sent. I'm sorry, you may not have had a chance to read it. I just would like to hit some of the points. In reading the documents regarding the proposal to move the coverage of government meetings from SMC in-house, I have the following questions and concerns. One has been addressed or mentioned by Jason. The Jacob, the projected $660,000 cost for the three-years provision of service includes operation of the public channel 21 as well as government channel 20. The comparison's not precise as the quoted figures don't cover the same services for all entities, i.e. the coverage of city commission, government meetings. The current contract includes SMC's coverage of all regular, special and study session meetings of seven city bodies. Additional meetings, which have been infrequent, are billed at a cost of $25 per hour with a two-hour minimum, according to our contract. The previous off-site meetings, which required additional audio support, were large-scale meetings impacted by social distancing and therefore necessitating extra audio support. It seems likely that the city would also have to obtain supplemental resources for similar future meetings, thus incurring the additional cost. Not that you needed more reading material, but SMC's March report, which indicates some recent advances, was not included in this packet. Today's recommendation calls into question the future of channel 21. Notably, the statements, the new employee would manage the PEG channel scheduling, P is for public. Bringing the service in-house would reduce costs by $100,000 to $120,000 annually. With a projected in-house budget of approximately $100,000, the only way to save the quoted $100,000 to $120,000 cost would be to eliminate funding for SMC and the public channel. The installation of over $144,000 worth of new equipment between the city county building and Memorial Hall was just completed last month with some delays in the process created by factors related to the COVID pandemic. The cause of subsequent glitches in production have been identified and addressed. As alluded to in the RFP and other entities' response, future meeting coverage is not likely to be entirely trouble-free, no matter who is providing the service. Technology sometimes fails and humans sometimes err. The staff and equipment needed to operate both channels 20 and 21 are interrelated and complex. Dissolution of the existing relationship will have devastating impacts on SMC's current operation of channel 21. If indeed the intent is to defund SMC, a June 30 deadline is not adequate time to sort out the who gets what, what resources might be shared and the resulting future of public access in Salina. The past 20 months have presented unique and trying challenges for SMC as well as city staff and the city commission. We understand your frustration. We have experienced it too. With new equipment, new staff, new programming and the perceived lessening of COVID impacts, we are certain that SMC has an integral role to play in continuing to inform, inspire, connect and engage the community. The times call for maximizing all of those efforts. In conclusion, I respectfully request that the city's contract with SMC be extended for six months to December 31, 2021, to allow time for full implementation of the improvements that have been made and full exploration of the impacts and resulting adjustments to be made, should the city still desire to bring video services in-house. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Klostermeyer. Are there any questions for Salina Media Connection?
One quick question, and I think we discussed it earlier. Installation of the $144,000 new equipment, was that city dollars or was that SMC dollars?
Yeah, there were some of each. Most of it was city money, but there were some grant dollars involved as well. Greg could affirm that or address that more clearly. And we do have those records, of course. Didn't, I didn't look at, that was before coming.
Thank you.
Ms. Klostermeyer, were the problems that arose in the recent weeks, or are you able to describe them in technical terms that a novice like me might understand? I mean, just to get a sense of whether they are something that should be fixed forever or?
I would have to defer to Greg on that because I'm not the technical, in the technical end of things.
Okay.
So Greg, do you have an answer for that? He's conferring.
Greg, do you have an answer as far as the technical difficulties?
Actually, if you could, if you could come to the podium, thank you.
Greg Stevens, 842 South Dent. The problems, I guess the question is, what caused the problems, Commissioner? I think there are multiple reasons. COVID, and we're doing a hybrid system here. Very few communities do hybrid systems. Jacob was right, there was testing going on. was testing going on. When I came over, we had county personnel in here, we had city personnel, we had our personnel, and we did test equipment. There were some switches made. I don't think we did it. I'm not trying to blame anybody. It's like was mentioned in the report that was given regarding the water report earlier on in the meeting. There are bugs that take place. There are bugs there, there are bugs that are going to take place with technology. And I think with, with the COVID situation and more people doing streaming and the system that we're using to, with Nextech, which has been working very, very well, there could have been a bandwidth issue that popped up, which has never happened before a time or two, especially one of the recent meetings. There's a whole host of things that could be happening. I don't think we're full blame for it all. I think, like Nancy said, humans are going to err and technology is going to have issues. That's been my experience 40 years out of K-State College of Technology as a technology management instructor, is there's always going to be downtime, different things happening. We just had a couple of issues last week there, so I hope that answers the question.
I guess what I wanted to find out, if the bugs of the last month had been fixed, I mean, less of squirrels eating through a cable under Ninth Street, but...
And I think they have, it's just that we've got a really complex system here that we're running, more complex than a lot of communities are doing. And it gives us a nicer opportunity for people to zoom in and what have you.
I don't know if it'd be helpful, but if we've not identified the solution, maybe it'd be helpful to discuss what's been done in the way of a diagnosis.
Well, I don't want to get personal or point fingers at anybody, but when you have three or four computers that are running what's going on here and we're doing something that few communities are doing, that I think is the diagnosis is. We're on the cutting edge of trying to do something new. And I'm not saying it's Salina Media Connection, because this has been a combination of ideas from three different sources of IT individuals. So I think it'll get better over time as we work through it. I have a few more things I want to say, but I'll wait until Nancy's done her talk.
Yes, please, absolutely.
A little over two years ago, I was Vice Chair of the Board or SMC, and I found myself in a position where I'd become interim director. And here's kind of the plan that we laid out. The first thing we wanted to do for a turnaround was assess what was going on, update the technology and equipment, because it's hard to build a program around equipment that's 10 or 15 years old, train personnel, and then work on marketing, scheduling and outreach, all of it including fundraising for grants and donations, which have increased. Nancy mentioned that the two channels are interdependent, they're very interdependent because the scheduling is done through our system over there in our server. And I'm kind of reluctant to say that we should have different people going into our server and doing scheduling because we're, we're constantly having to go in there and make changes in the scheduling. So the scheduling is for both channels in that one server that's done through cable cast. So the interdependency is cost-wise a savings for us, it's personnel-wise a savings, and equipment-wise is the savings, because it's really not going to be very easy to have two different scheduling systems going out to Cox. Next, my research shows that over half of this line of community watches Access TV, I mean, has cable and can watch Access TV. The funds that are coming in from the franchise are not declining, have not declined. And the largest demographic for that is the demographic over 60 years of age, nearly 80% of that demographic, according to Pew Research recently shows that seniors like TV. And TV is the most credible source, but streaming's like TV and streaming's going to increase. I agree. We offer streaming too through Roku, Apple. And the last point I want to make is, local media drives democracy. Thomas Jefferson said, "Information is the currency of democracy." And the more we can utilize and provide local media, and we have increased tremendously doing that on the public channel, is going to help serve the engagement that we want in the community and people's participation. It's not what we want most. Let's not give up what we want most, because I think all of us want local democracy. Let's not give it up for what we want now. Let's stay the course, have patience, and I think we're going to be well-served in the long run. So those are the only comments I wanted to make.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. Are there any further questions from the Commission for Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Stevens, no, but I would like to ask a question that the other presenters would, would like to be prepared to answer. And Jacob, Mr. Wood may know the answer. Do any of those other proposals include having a Zoom system like we're running right now? Where you can, because, I mean, what I like about this is citizens can participate in the meeting from home, I mean, truly communicate, I mean, participate in the meeting from home.
Yes, Eagle would be able to do the same setup that we're doing today. And in-house as well, I'm sorry. Yes. Swaggett, I'm, it's a totally different system than what this is, so I'm sure that they have a Zoom platform, but I don't have the answer off the top of my head for that. But I know that Eagle and in-house would be able to continue with Zoom.
Thank you. I think Deborah wants to make a comment or two.
Oh, absolutely. Deborah Cox, Salina Media Connection. I was prepared not to speak, but I am happy to talk about Salina Media Connection. What I'm going to do is end our comments with talking about the accomplishments that we've made during COVID. Everyone knows our lives were just kind of upended with COVID. I have watched, I watch TV a lot, and I have watched every station and I have seen every station have problems with sound and every station or every, the news programs and the other programs have had some connection issues. So when we experience that, I see that we're just like everyone else. But there are some things that we are very proud of that we've been able to do during COVID. Changes that have been needed have been made, such as recording hybrid government meetings. Not many communities, as Greg said, are doing that. We're also proud to have provided new, a local kids' connection show every week, every two days during the week, morning and afternoon. New, a Spanish connection information program in Spanish. New, Salina and Sling County Health Department program highlighting COVID-19 issues. New, an IT informational program. And we've made, helped media arts, artists and arts assistance for local community artists. We've also been covering Salina Liberty football games. And now we've started to cover some Salina Speedway races. We're also finally, I've been working on developing a new program, a community issues and information program. It takes a little while to get those going, so my development is still in process. And when we get that, we will definitely let the community know. That's pretty much what we've been doing this year during COVID. I hope you noticed all the new that I expressed, and that's just been amazing. And it's been our amazing, very dedicated staff that has been doing this work, and we're very proud of that. I don't think you have any questions, so.
Any questions for Ms. Cox?
Is there a place you can go when you want to see the kids' connection and the Spanish connection when those shows will be on? Where do you find those at?
YouTube. You can go to YouTube.
But as far as knowing when it's live or when it's on, Cox?
We have a schedule, and I'm not the one, I don't do the programming. So actually, Greg is the one that you need to answer about where to connect. I'm staff, I'm the staff person, and I do help with developing programming, but I don't program it.
Greg, did you want to answer where he can go?
I'm, oh, he said at 10 and 4 is Kids' Connection.
How does, how does the public know that?
Greg?
Yeah, to come up to the...
Uh, Ms., can you come back up, Mr. Stevens? Sorry.
I'm going to go, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cox, I appreciate it.
Kids' Connection's at 10 and 4, Monday through Friday, and then we play a Saturday version at 10, which is a replicate, a repeat of one of the weekday versions. It's a one-hour show, and it has been running a year now. Spanish Connection plays at 8:00 in the morning, 1:00 and 8:00 in the evening. But that's probably going to change because when we're doing these sports, they take longer times, and we got to work it in. Our schedule is posted on our webpage, salinatv.org. It says TV schedule. If you click on that, it'll take you to the both channels, and you click on that, it lists everything that's listed out. We haven't been focusing on a long-range schedule because we need, we needed programs, and we were told that we need, we wanted, the city wanted us to do local programs from 6:00 to 10:00. That's a lot of programming. I think Bunker Hill does four programs a month or something like that, but, I mean, every week before a month, that's. So what we're doing is we're running out and catching a lot of little news shows. We're in Assyria today doing one. We did the Berkeley thing yesterday because we've increased the staff. Those are shorter programs. And we used some advice from Fort Hayes to run the programs and, you know, in a block so that they'd be Salina-based programs. So you don't always know what you want to get necessarily if you aren't going to go look at the schedule. And, but you know that they'd be Salina-based, it'd kind of like be watching YouTube, just watching the next thing that happens and the next thing.
So if I take my channel, my remote, and I hit the guide, and it brings up all the stations, what does it show me under channel 21 that will be showing?
If you hit your channel of remote.
Yeah, if I go to my guide and it shows, I can watch NBC News, you know, whatever, what does it show on channel 21?
We haven't been able to get Cox to help us do that description of programs that are on the TV guide thing. That's something we're working at, but...
And I would agree with Mr. Stevens. In our dealings with Cox, they view the PEG channels as an obligation, but I don't know that they're, they're out of their way to accommodate additional features.
That's my whole question is, yeah, where, how people know what they're going to have to try to, you know, what's available.
One of the things I've mentioned, Commissioner Hoppe, is we had to have the equipment and we had to have the programs, which means the staff. Then we do the marketing and the scheduling. It's not, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves by promising something that we can't deliver very well. That might have been, that doesn't work very well in the business world, I don't think. So we're, we're to the point now where scheduling is, is going to be more important. If you look at the bumpers we have between the programs, we're now starting to market our programs a little bit more. And that tape or that little video that was sent out that you might have looked at, you can see some of the bumpers that we're starting. That's trying to sell both channels, that we can sell people back and forth. So those are things we haven't done in the past that we can do now that can help us a little bit more. But scheduling has been an issue that I think we're, we're near the, I can see the daylight at the end here for that.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Stevens before he sits down again? Commissioner Ryan or Commissioner Davis?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. With that, Mr. Wood, there's not a representative from Swaggett here, is there?
No, there's not.
Okay. But I guess we do have a representative from Eagle, if Eagle Communications would like to approach.
Hi, Ron Fields with Eagle Communications. I'm from Hayes, the News and Information Director. So I do want to applaud the folks at Salina Media Connection for dedicating all their time and effort to community programming. It's been important for us as a company in the past as a cable provider. And also your, the importance that you guys are putting on covering public meetings and making sure that that is out in the forefront. You know, we're, this really struck us as a, as a good partnership when we saw it come open because it's something that we have experience in. We have a production team in Salina. Our complete production team is eight people, five of them are based in Salina, including Mid-America Productions. And then two of our folks have actually done this for the city of Salina in the past as well. So we also bring some technical expertise from the cable side of the world. I do think Jacob touched upon the fact that there are some unknowns, that we do need some inventory of the equipment, the processes, the software. So there will be some unknowns going in. But as far as bringing the, the work in-house, I think there's some hidden costs to, to consider. When Mr. Spray was talking about bringing the project in-house, I think he mentioned three or four other, other people or departments that would have some of the duties transferred, you know. With our bid, that, that brings professional videographer into your place, taking care of the equipment, making sure that it runs the way it should. And again, I'm here to answer questions if they're of me. David Hawkesworth, I'm going to ask to come up. He is the more technical side of the world. But again, more than happy to answer questions about our proposal.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Eagle? About their proposal?
You, you talk about video staff. You have video staff available to do something, if we were to do something off-site or in an evening scenario, that type of thing?
Certainly. And we also have our own equipment, so we wouldn't need to worry about buying new equipment or things like that.
And is there a lead time to, if we were going to do something like at Tony's Pizza Event Center, is there a certain amount of lead time that you need, you have to be given in order to do that? is there a certain amount of lead time that you need, you have to be given in order to do that?
I believe it would be, but you know, we certainly like at least a week notice, just to make sure our schedules are clear, things like that. Certainly something we could talk about if, if we move, move down the road on this.
Would you envision needing anything additional to what's in this room now to be able to push the broadcast to Cox?
David, and David can actually probably speak to this a little better, but we only got to do an inventory on the stuff in this, in this room, not at Memorial Hall. So there's, the equipment's in two different locations. They're really, we've just seen half of it. So that's, that's one of those unknowns going in.
Commissioner Ryan, have you got any questions about the Eagle?
No questions for Eagle.
Mr. Hawkesworth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Hawkesworth, I live at 2315 River Trail Road here in Salina, and I'm a video producer with Eagle Communications. I just want to emphasize that our video production team is very highly experienced. I've been in video for 31 years. My colleague Brian Dennett has been in video for, I believe, 27 years. And then the staff at Mid-America Productions all have between 20 and 25 years of experience in video. So between the five of us here in Salina, I'm confident that we can put our heads together, diagnose any problems that, that are with the system, get them fixed, and provide a great service for the city. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Is there, when meetings run long, is your staff just here? I mean, is that, do you, we get billed for this meeting or is it an hourly basis?
No, I believe.
Is it the same if it's a two-hour meeting as opposed to a six-hour meeting?
No, I believe with the way that the RFP was structured, any meetings that take place in this room that are regularly scheduled are included in that annual fee. If there's a special meeting that's called, that would be billed additionally.
And would your proposal, or does your proposal address the other entities, county, school, and whoever else? I can't, I know there's about six of them that get broadcasted.
So, so we did get some numbers from, from Eagle about what it would cost to incorporate the county meeting, but it, it's really just what happens in this room. So we don't record, I mean, we just broadcast what plays for the, the school board. We would continue to play that on the channel as we do now. I mean, they'd have to help us schedule it and get it on, but it's not live.
Does, okay, so the school board records that itself or does Salina Media go out and record?
That's a question for Salina Media Connection. I don't know what their arrangement is with the school, but I don't believe it plays live. I think it's something that's replayed afterwards, and we would continue to offer that.
I understand they invested in and installed their own equipment, so they recorded, provide the video, the school does.
So the school, and I guess we have the unfair advantage of having the school board member sitting in the back room who probably would, would have reason to know, but, so USD 305 produces it and just packages it and sends it over. And that's true for anyone else, what are the other meetings that we?
I don't believe there's any other outside, nope.
But that's in this room.
Anything that happens here, it would be covered. Any of the city meetings that we typically normally do are included in an RFP.
Okay, this may be a stupid question, but what's the difference between off-site recording and video production?
I believe the way the RFP stated it was that off-site production would be for, like, as you expressed in a scenario before, a city commission meeting that took place outside of this room, like at Tony's Pizza Event Center. With video production would entail doing a talk show of some sort or covering an event or, or something along those lines.
Because one of the things I want to talk about is whether it's in-house with Eagle is doing, you know, some type of a video production for like Koma Cora. You know, we've talked about all these board training. So that's, that was my question is if that's what that entailed, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, or if we wanted to do something like, I think this was mentioned earlier, like a spotlight on a specific city project or something like a tour of the water plant or whatever, that's, that would be the, the off-site, or that would be the video production.
That would be the video production.
The video production, okay, great, thank you. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we have any comments or questions from members of the public?
David Norland, 608 East Republic, and Commissioners, thank you for accepting my private communications. I'm going to try not to just repeat what I have already communicated to you in individual communication. It is nice, Carl, to be able to see you on Zoom. Thanks for the technology. It seems there are many things to be said, I think. And I don't come pretending to have a vast video background, but I do have broadcasting. In fact, the radio station KVCO, Voice of Cloud County, had its reunion fundraiser. I got to appear by voice. I have the face for radio, and that's great for here because I have a mask as well. But, so it reunited me with that and reminded me, in reminiscing about that, about what Deborah Cox was speaking of, that stuff can go wrong, no matter what technology. And so there's the issue then, isn't there, of how valuable and visible and crystal clear the product is, right? Terms of audio/video. And I would say that I, I say this without any denigration over on Fields. Ron, hi, how are you? We communicated before. I don't think you may not remember. So I know they do a good job, and David as well. But what we're looking at, it seems to me, in essence, and if I understand it right, the reason we're having this discussion is that there were some glitches in having these meetings, which are important to the public, being seen clearly. What Salina Media Connection has given you and has given this community for years and years is a base upon which to have all of that in-house within Salina Media Connection. It is a matter of having an integrated perspective about what happens in these meetings and the programs outside. We could have tours of the water plant. We could have Liberty Football. We can have a variety of community activities. And yes, there's a need, as Greg indicated, to improve on those. And it could happen, particularly if you adopt what Nancy Kloster-Meyer suggested to you, more opportunity to look at that. Commissioner Hoppick, I hope you don't mind my quoting you, but Mike said that he started promises, and I understand that perspective. Yes, I do understand that. But if you keep this so that the city money is supporting an agency that provides all those services, and most importantly, and I've said this before, I hope I'm not too tiresome about it, the public really needs a place where issues can be discussed. This is where local government, which is closest to the people, is hashed out. And citizens will come here and they'll say things at this podium that I don't agree with, but at least there's an opportunity. What Salina Media Connection gives you is the ability not just to appear at a meeting before a podium like this, like we are, but have a chance to really discuss it so that it is not just the commissioners, but the public who has an understanding, not only of the issues, but of why commissioners made the decisions that they did and the direction of the city. I think it is a mistake to go out house for that. Keep it in-house, not in this respect, but for Salina Media Connection. However you do that, that would be my appeal.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Norland. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about this issue? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
I'd just like to discuss, I'm not going to necessarily propose any action. No secret, I've been a supporter of Salina Media Connection, and I think they have, shouldn't say they, the organization has done well to try to improve the, the quality of the production. And in the last couple of weeks, we've been getting some pixelated images on our images at, at home. And you call into the service provider and, well, they send you these checks, but the pixelated stuff is still there. So I don't know what causes it. And if it's an infrequent occurrence, then I think it's within the accepted realm of what we are going to get. I think it's hard for Salina Media Connection to keep operating under a six-month guarantee. It makes it hard to plan, makes it hard to get a budget, makes it hard to attract producers or attract talent when it can't promise that their doors are going to be open any longer than six months. So at, at the end, if, if we are continuing funding to Salina Media Connection, I would, I would hope that it's for a minimum of 12 months. I'd actually even like to see a 24-month plan so that they have a chance to do some long-range planning. Channel 20 is a government, it's for these meetings. We need quality production, reliable production, and we need to be able to archive the meetings to be sure Channel 20 is a loss leader for Channel 21. You know, the, the true work of what Salina Media Connection does, which makes it a cultural asset, happens on both channels. But certainly there are opportunities, you know, for sports, public engagement, training, production, local programming, education. You know, that's something we take for granted because it's, I've been here 22 years. It's been here, I think, the whole time I've been here. But we just assume that it's here because it's been here. I don't know if in one year, if budget cuts as steep as $100,000, Salina Media Connection would allow Channel 21 to continue with any semblance of, of order. I mean, that, that would be true budget shock. If we decide to move the Room 107 meetings elsewhere, I would suggest that, you know, if what we want out of Channel 21 is just a reliable program, but we recognize the, the goals of Channel 21, that we keep them fully funded. Or if there's any decrease, I mean, it needs to be minimal, otherwise you set up a self-fulfilling prophecy. Well, you, you're not doing a good job. We're going to take away half your, your funding. But guess what? You're going to do even a worse job next year because you don't have the funding to succeed. So I would, I would like to keep them whole. If we bring it in-house, I'm still wondering how much extra staff we need. And when we have technical problems, and I, and maybe it's because of the way our system runs across the street and out, but very often it's people working in three different locations, two or three locations, trying to figure out what the problem is. And if, if that would totally go away with everything being on this side of the street, there may be some cost savings. But I think what the city as a whole gives up, and you can't measure those cultural benefits in terms of hard dollars and cents. You know, when you don't have and you try to reproduce it, then you find out how much it, much it costs. But, you know, if, if we think that the, the meetings need to be broadcast elsewhere, which I'm not 100% sure. Again, I've not watched the last three meetings on TV because I've been here. So I don't know what the meeting looks like from the other side. And once our meetings go beyond two hours, my wife, she's not going to be watching. Other than at 10 o'clock at night, she'll tune in to find out if we're really still down here.
Sounds familiar.
But I'm, I'm concerned that, that we're going to endanger a cultural gem here in Salina if, if we're not very deliberate and careful what we do with Salina Media Connection. I, I think their efforts to, to upgrade the service have been genuine. You know, a lot of the folks there have other day jobs, so, you know, and, you know, Mid-America Productions has, has helped them with some of our productions. And obviously they have a reputation in the city, which is undeniably very good. But I don't want us to make a decision that will jeopardize more than just our, our meetings here. I'd like to hear the other commissioners' comments.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
So I really appreciate the accomplishments and the new programming. That's all been very interesting to me. And I guess when the water gets hot in the cauldron, the denizens in the cauldron start moving around a little quicker. But for me is that we provide a quality product to the, to the, to the public. I'm a little bit dismayed to hear a number of people that have commented to me the last couple of weeks and some suggestions of it, even in this meeting, that, that we're trying to defund Salina Media. And I don't really think that's the point here. I will agree that maybe our presentations are complex. But what's come down to my opinion is that they just don't have the expertise to present our meetings the way we'd like them to do that. I know that things can go wrong, but I would much rather look to a contractor that has the specific expertise that I trust for the answers or, or to our own in-house people. Even though we've had these problems the last two years, we've lent Mr. Gardner and Mr. Woods some rather expensive expertise of our own in order to, to stopgap the problems that we've had. So in my opinion, the question today is not really about defunding or the quality of their programming or any of that. It's just, do we take this in-house or not? And to that question, I'm comfortable with either of the solutions that the staff has offered for contracting with someone. I kind of think that Mr. Franz favored doing it in-house and to look at the numbers and the other intangibles, the prospects for programming and production intangibles to the city. The, I think that that would be the way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got notes scattered all over here, so bear with me. I guess part of my vision would be whether we would go with Eagle or bring it in-house. And I kind of am leaning a little bit towards in-house would be the fact that we could hire an engagement coordinator and a dedicated media coordinator and, and do some of the things that we need to do to get our message out to the public. And I think that would be beneficial to us. I think we could put together some training, tapes for boards and so on and so forth. One of the things that Mr. Stevens made is the fact that, you know, he didn't want to point fingers. Well, the problem is when you get too many people involved, you, oh, you get to the finger pointing. I remember years ago when I was in charge of data processing at a, at a local bank. We were, we had Southwestern Bell involved, our software, us and the, and the hardware company. You had a problem, you had four people pointing each other, you know, and it's like, I don't care who it is, I need to get it fixed. And I kind of feel like that's where we're at a little bit with some of these issues. I do have a philosophical problem with Channel 21. I'm going to disagree with Commissioner Davis that this is a cultural gem. I never know when anything's on. I have to flip through the channel and I find something. I, I love the, the Spanish Connection show, even though I don't understand a thing they're saying. I think that's, I think that is a benefit to our community. And I would think that's something that with one of our, with our department, that we could do something like that in-house and, and help with the Hispanic community. Like I said, you, you can't go to a, to your remote and find out what's on Channel 21. And again, I'm still watching South High or Central football games from nine months ago or a year, that they're filling time. I know we told them we have to have a certain amount of shows. And I just, I'm not, I, I do have a problem with the, the number, the dollars we're, we're throwing at both Channel 20 and 21. I could see that money being used in a, in a better, in a better way. So I guess at this time, I would probably lean toward just bringing it in-house. And if we were to fund Salina Media Connection, it would be at a significantly slower dollar amount.
If we were, if I could, if we have a public meeting up there, just if we had something like a river renewal or, well, like what we did with the policing initiative, would we have enough in-house staff to cover them that look, you know, you just look at those productions and it looks like there are four or five people on cameras and sounds and cables and just look like more than two people running around producing that.
I defer to Mr. Wood on that.
But we would certainly have the two employees that are dedicated to this. So the community engagement coordinator and then this new position that we've not, not named. But we also have an entire community, I mean, a computer technology staff, so we would be able to, to support that. Now, we're going to have to look at the equipment and, you know, and how to do that. I mean, certainly, there could be a hybrid where we work with, you know, Eagle to do some of those, the off-site stuff with the crews that they already have. I mean, I, I don't know that answer. I guess is the real, the real good answer to the question is we would just have to look at it and see what it, what it takes to do those sorts of things.
Thank you. I guess I really don't have anything to add beyond what I, what we've discussed in, in previous meetings. And everyone here has, has expressed views that, that resonate with me. And in terms of bringing it in-house, my, my concern is I don't think it's a one-person job. When you look at the hours that we meet at and, and the other commissions and, and boards that, that meet, I really, you know, I just, I would hate, I would hate for us to underestimate the time that it takes to not only record video, but like produce it. Because like Commissioner Hoppeck, I see a real possibility here for us being able to, you know, live stream meetings on our website or, or whether it's producing programming that we need to do to get board members oriented on, on Koma and Cora. There's a real opportunity. And I think there's also a need for cross-training. And if you have, say, like two and a half people, the community engagement coordinator, the person to be named later, and maybe a part-time person, I think that that's getting us to a place where we can actually accomplish some of the, the, the goals that we've all expressed, we'd like to see from, from doing it in-house. And it's, I just, I really appreciate the investment that Salina Media Connection has made in equipment and in personnel. And I, I know that you all have done your best job to, to be responsive to the concerns that we've raised. And yes, I acknowledge that humans are always going to err and there's going to be things that we can't anticipate and that will go wrong. But the consistency with which that has happened over the past two and a half, three years, however long we've been discussing this, is really unfortunate as we kind of take it, all of this into consideration and look at it. So I want to thank everybody for responding to the RFPs. And I would look to one of my fellow commissioners to...
One, ask one.
Sure.
Commissioner Hoppeck, not directed at him specifically, but the Spanish Connection program. Is that a community cultural-based program? Or is it something that a government channel would typically air? You'd mentioned that you'd like to see that.
I think Ms. Cox could probably answer what.
I'm embarrassed to say, I, I don't know enough about the content of the program to ask the question. And, and the reason I'm asking is I guess I'd be a little nervous if our, we start bringing our public or private-oriented programming into a government channel because then we end up acting as a censor. I mean, somebody is, well, you let them on, how come I can't get on? And it just makes sure the, the, the fence down the line is, is clearly marked.
Your question?
What, what type of program is Spanish Connection and the Kids Connection?
It's, uh, uh, Kids Connection is definitely a community. And we have, I, I, I'm going to just say 10 or 12 organizations in the community. When COVID started, it was for the summer. And they contributed programming. And we filmed some or taped some programming from artists and folks in the community that we kind of could, got to come in and do some things for the kids. Spanish Connection is a community program. Not sure that they would, that are, and it's owned by the producer, who is Hispanic. And she has talked to, oh my gosh, she's been out of this country talking with presidents of Spanish country. So she is a community volunteer.
So there are definitely more Channel 21-type programs.
Yes, and, and you can find our schedule. I just couldn't tell you about it, Commissioner Hoppeck, because I don't do the programming. But it is shown on our station. And also, you can find it on our website, on our Facebook.
Right, but somebody has to go to that website, which I'm not sure how many people do that with.
Or if you just flip, if you get to the channel, it does after programming is in between programs, the schedule is there.
Yeah, in between programs.
Mm-hmm, right.
And any further questions, either for staff or the providers or comments?
One question for staff. If an action other than continuing the current agreement is taken, does the issue of funding to Salina Media Connection have to be addressed at the very same time? Or is that all fall under the to be negotiated later category?
Well, I think, I don't know who was, was the describer, but I think this has been written on the premise that it's either or, that it's Salina Media Connection or we're going an alternate route. If the desire is to try to come up with some hybrid approach, then we're going to need clarification on your expectations of the governing body. I think we're going to need an opportunity to put together a budget to fund the meeting aspect of that and then see what, what remainder that leaves. So I think that turns it into a two-part conversation.
Well, sometimes you do things for the fun of it. I move to allow the current agreement with Salina Media Connection to continue in present form.
Is there a second?
I'll be negotiating.
Mayor Hodges, I move that we direct staff to bring the service in-house.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to bring city commission and other city board meeting production in-house. Is there any further discussion?
Just for clarification, and as you qualify, your characterization of that limited it to meeting. Then I need to confirm that the consensus.
I'm sorry, that was, that was my imposition, I think, on what Commissioner Hoppeck or Ryan, whoever made the motion said.
Yeah, I just direct that we bring the service in-house.
Okay, sorry.
Just as on the book sheet.
This is for just, so this is addressing only the meetings broadcast in this room?
The service agreement that's up for renewal is the entirety of Salina Media Connection's services.
So we would not have a contract with Salina Media Connection?
In, in this format, you would not.
So that would be both channels?
Yes.
And, okay, well.
How would we possibly take over Channel 21?
Well, I don't, I think the assumption would be that we would not, that we would not take over Channel 21. That Channel 21 would no longer be there.
That would be through private funding or grants or something.
Right.
Well, now the channel would not be there or the same organization?
Tax communication would continue to have an obligation to us to provide the channel and the bandwidth. If there were producers that produce content, we could coordinate broadcast of that content. I, this format does not anticipate that we're generating that content.
So this.
But the content that we do generate, we could play on either channel. So if we, the content that the community engagement coordinator in the new position that they do generate, it could be played on both channels, either or. So we could continue to, to keep the government channel as just meetings and then use the other channel for any additional content that we create. Or I've seen other communities do like a rotating calendar or do a rotating calendar events or employment openings or those sorts of things could be streaming on that channel in a rotational fashion, so updates.
So the government would basically be in the position to censor what goes on that channel?
Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate that we would be, I, I wouldn't anticipate that we would be taking content from outside of what we create. So we wouldn't be taking content from other entities for that channel. It would be what we create. So I, I suppose in that form, it would be censoring.
I could see us subcontracting Channel 21, just to kill it like that. I, I, we don't even have the staff yet to take over this. There's no timeline on this. It's going to take months to get it up and running. We've got an organization we're leaving in, in Lurch while we're doing it. So you de-motivate an organization to put its best foot forward because you know, they know you're kicking them out the door. That, that, it just doesn't seem like a thought-out, complete course of action to take right now.
Mayor, may I? It doesn't seem to me that we're precluding having an agreement with SMC to provide programming for the other channel. We're just going to have to rework the arrangement with them. And I would hope that there's still be considered to do things that they do best and, and that we would take over the production of what we're concerned about. So I, in this, it's never seemed to me that Channel 21 actually goes away. Salina Media is still, is in existence. And at prior times, they've spoken at the podium with some confidence that they could fundraise for themselves. So I don't understand the conversation about it going away.
Well, that's, I'm trying to find out, this doesn't say what happens.
Well, that's, that's for future discussion.
The contract with them vanishes. And we have two channels, so what happens with, I mean, we haven't got up and running to handle one channel yet. I mean, I don't know how we're going to handle two channels, and it's, it's just very vague.
We're not going to handle Channel 21.
That's what I'm asking.
Right.
So this proposal is to kill Channel 21?
Don't, I'm not killing it, I'm just not funding it.
If we're not having it, it's killed. I mean, if it goes off the air, if it goes dark for six months, I mean, it's dead.
Why would it go dark? It's a dark part of the time now for insufficient programming.
But, but who, who would be running it?
Salina Media Connection and their board. We don't run 21 now.
Right, but this, you'd be bringing 20 and 21 in-house?
No, not 21, just the government channel, Channel 20.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking, that, that wasn't clear in the, that wasn't clear in the, in the motion. We have the motion rewritten?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, put it on the spot there.
Sorry.
I guess I'm not certain, I mean, Commissioner Hoppeck.
It's, it's just to direct staff to bring the service in-house. So basically, what we're doing is we're not renewing the current contract with Salina Media Connection. Would that be correct if I look at staff?
So there'll be additional.
The, the service is a vague term. What, what constitutes the service?
So if you tell us that you want us to bring the service in-house, then we will go ahead and develop that plan out. We'll get the position description that we think is appropriate. And then we'll bring back an action that will be adding a position to the pay plan. And then we'll have to have another, another action that changes what we do with Salina Media Connection. So, so we'll have, we can refine that.
When it says the service, what, can you define the service?
Well, I think that's the meetings, what happens right now, just the meeting.
City, city, city meeting. And I guess it would also be the county.
They have a contract until the end of the year, isn't that correct?
Well, they, they currently do have a contract. And it runs, well, the contract runs through Jan, through June, through the end of June. If we don't do anything, then it will run until the end of the year. But if we don't provide notice on that contract before June, then it will run, it will continue in its old-fashioned and we'll have June of next year to provide notice. So it's a, if we are, if we're going to go away from the video service in this room, we need to rework the contract with Salina Media Connection. So the action would be at least to, to terminate that contract and rework it and then add additional staff. And we'll have to figure out what the dollars and cents of that all looks like.
But what's being reworked is only the broad, so we're taking away the broadcasting of these meetings from the Salina Media Connection contract?
Yes.
But taking nothing else away from them?
And or payment to them.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so taking.
But we don't know what that amount is.
Well, the funding is another question to be discussed.
Yeah.
We can fully fund them, we might reduce it, the amount that it takes for us to bring it in-house. I mean, a number of different ways to look at it, isn't that correct?
I would hope so.
But just to be clear, I think the message that I've gotten from staff in the past and in, in, in this staff report as well, is that the assumption is if we bring Channel 20 in-house to broadcast and to produce the citizen board and commission meetings, they're looking at that as an offset because we would not fund Salina Media Connection. I mean, I think that when you look at the.
For that person of their services.
Yeah, yeah, because, because the, you know, the fiscal, the fiscal note, and I think Ms. Klostermars spoke to that earlier, choosing an alternate provider or bringing the service in-house would reduce the annual cost by approximately $100,000 to $120,000 annually. So, I mean, I, I, you know, I don't want to give, you know, a false impression of, you know, what this action or this decision may entail in, in the future in terms of the viability of Salina Media Connection and Channel 21 because we, we just, that, that's, yeah, that's an unknown. I mean, as to whether or not they could fill that funding gap or not, but.
But that's what I want to make sure, that's not what's being determined in this motion. So all we are, all this motion addresses is broadcasting of meetings in this room as far as what's currently included in the Salina Media Connection contract.
Ultimately, that's in your discretion as the governing body. If you wish to provide clarification as a group, you can provide us further direction on your intention as it relates to funding of Salina Media Connection for the community programming aspect of this.
I don't know if I'm comfortable doing that until we know what our total cost and our.
We'd have to get those, those numbers then and then have a discussion. But that's not being done today. This is, the only decision we're making today is to authorize staff to notify, I'm, I'm, I'm going to expand this, notify Salina Media Connection that we intend to bring this in-house and that our staff should start ramping up to bring it in-house.
And if you make that decision, that necessitates another amendment to the agreement, we'll have to redraft and, and.
Right, but is that what this motion in this expanded form means? Or does it mean a whole lot less than that or a whole lot more?
Well, frankly, you can have that discussion today or we can.
No, I don't need it today, I just want to know what I'm voting on. No, I don't need it today, I just wanna know what I'm voting on today.
I mean, it, you, you could choose to say, we're only making the in-service decision, bringing the service in-house discussion, decision today, and we'll decide the rest later, or you could provide clarity on.
That's what I thought we would be deciding, is that not what the motion maker intended?
But basically, when we bring this in, that's part of their contract, so we're not renewing their contract. We're giving them notice, right, that as of June thirtieth, we do not have a contract with Salina Media Connection.
Not in its present form.
In its present form. So if we decide to do something different, we'll have to do that as a separate motion, um, at some point. If we decide.
So this is to notify them that the contract will be reworked?
It's, that it's not being renewed.
Not being renewed.
I'm not saying reworked, because we don't know that, it's just not being renewed.
Good distinction, appreciate that. So it's not being renewed, all that to be determined later. So we're not making any decisions about what happens to the channels, other than we're gonna produce the programming from this room in-house.
In-house.
That's your desired direction, yes, you can do that.
Okay, good. I think we'll go ahead and, um, vote on this, if that's all right with everyone. Okay. Um, so the motion on the table is to, um, exercise option number four, as shown in the staff report, to direct staff to bring the service in-house.
And service is being defined as?
As, um, meeting coverage in room one oh seven. But also, we talked about doing extra, I mean, that's where I got in trouble before, because we're also talking about expanding um, the service.
All right.
That we do, so I think that the motion is just direct staff to bring the service in-house.
And then it's the coverage of our municipal meetings.
And other items that we direct staff to do through videoing.
Nothing would prevent us today from producing our own video, putting it on social media, and providing it to Salina Media Connection and asking that it be broadcast. So I, if the staff that are brought onboard to cover meetings produces a, additional video content, I don't think that's prohibited by any.
Right.
Could we have a, if everyone's comfortable with that, with that motion, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Nay.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye, and that motion passes three to one. And as far as, um, staff, do, I'll look to Mr. Skreg and Mr. Wood. Um, at what point do we need to give you further direction in terms of whether or not there's going to be any, um, funding that we can reallocate toward Salina Media Connection or not? I mean, how long will it take to get some, some figuring done?
In, in light of the deadline, we're gonna have to expedite bringing back to you a budget for the in-house aspect of the services, and you can have a conversation about
Okay.
uh, any remaining funds and what you might wish to do.
Thank you. Um, is everyone okay to keep going, or do we need to take a break? If we're okay.
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, great. All right, then we'll keep going with item seven point two.
Item seven point two, approve resolution number twenty-one dash seven nine five two, amending resolution number eighteen dash seven six four seven, extending the time period for attainment of goals under the city continuous process improvement program established in the original resolution.
Mr. Gardner?
Mayor Commissioners, a few years ago, we came to you with an incentive plan for the city, um, to reach a certain percentage of our expenditures, and due to COVID, uh, we weren't able to meet that expiration, which was, uh, December of last year. As you know, uh, early on in the year, uh, we reduced as far as staff's working hours and days of work, and so a lot of the projects that we were working got put on hold. And so what you have before you is a resolution asking that you give us a six-month extension. We have worked projects to a significant level in a lot of areas, uh, or departments. What we need to do is get those projects before the city manager for his approval to either proceed or to stop, but we have identified a significant amount of value, um, to the city, and that is traceable by finance. So we are looking at numbers that will impact what we do, or will impact throughput, or free up resources for reallocation, uh, toward things that are not necessarily getting done at this particular time. So we do have numbers in there for you. Uh, as you can see, we've identified enough to meet that goal, but as I said, we've gotta get those before the city manager for his approval, uh, as far as to proceed or not. And with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Gardner?
No, ma'am.
Nope, all right.
I guess the, the more you save, the tighter, the leaner the budget gets, the harder it is to save more money?
Wha- what? What, what I'm saying is, change is difficult, and, and government change is, is even more so difficult, because unfortunately, we hit, we've always done it that way. And I, I know that, uh, the city manager is, is challenging us to do things differently, and get out of the rut of, that's just the way city government is ran. That's hard. Uh, it takes time, but, uh, the city manager does have us focusing on larger projects would take longer, um, towards fruition, because everything is based on the numbers. The thing that we're confident on is we're not giving you an opinion, we're going off of the numbers as they relate to Salina, not to Wichita or anywhere else, but how does this affect us, and how does this make us better? And the city manager does a great job of scrutinizing these things as they come forward. Uh, actually, tomorrow, we have three projects that are going before him tomorrow for his approval, uh, to proceed. We have noticed that there has been improvement, because they do what's called a DOE, which is a design of experiments, where they actually test it in the area. Unfortunately, the downside of that is, as people see the benefit of it, they don't want them to undo it. And so now they're getting the benefits, but they just don't wanna finish the project, because we've got the benefit now. But they still need to go for his approval.
Is, is there a chance that as some of these are implemented, they could be, um, shared with the commission? Because I guess I'll be honest, I don't know of some of the s- continued, continuous process improvements that we've done. I mean, it'd be nice to see, kind of.
It's been a while since we've provided a report.
Been a long time since we've.
Coming out of COVID and getting some of these.
Yeah, I've, I've just, I think it'd be beneficial to us to, to really see how we're trying to impact the, the, uh, the, the entire, uh, workforce through that, so.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm speaking for myself, I don't even know that it needs to be as, um, in-depth, uh, as a study session, but even if, you know, there was like some sort of an extended commission information memorandum, I, it would just be helpful to, to, to get updated on that, in terms of, you know, what we saved, what the program costs, you know, the, the return on our investment that this program is.
Are some of these implemented by, you know, by their, by each department themselves, or is it guided through you, Mr. Gardner? How do those kind of?
We do have a number of them that are called just do-its or quick fixes, and those are done at the department level, and then we have the high-impact projects. Those are the ones that usually have a larger dollar amount, and those are the ones that come through me and then go through the city manager.
Yeah, it'd be kind of nice to see both of those, just to see, because I, I think it's, you know, it'd be beneficial to see that different departments are taking, uh, you know, some of, some, uh, leadership in, in doing some of those things, so, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gardner, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any, um, questions or comments from the public? Okay, not seeing any, and not seeing any up on the, uh, screen. I'll bring it back to the commission for, with a discussion or action.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve resolution number twenty-one dash seven nine five two, extending the time period for attaining the goal by six months to allow for the COVID-nineteen impacted time period, and allow the city manager to award the extra one day of vacation to city employees at an appropriate date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Um, I lost my, I lost my notes here. Sorry about that. To approve resolution number twenty-one dash seven nine five two, amending resolution number eighteen dash seven six four seven, extending the time period for attainment of goals under the CPI program established in the original resolution. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye, that motion passes four zero. Um, item seven point three.
Item seven point three, authorize the city manager to execute in agreement with the Dragon Corporation for the work plan for consulting services remedial design phase two at the former Schilling Air Force Base site.
Ms. Tasker?
Um, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities, gonna present a brief staff report, and then we have Salina Public Entities in attendance. Uh, we have Dragon staff by Zoom, and, uh, legal counsel here will try to address your questions at the end. Um, the executive management, management agreement among the four Salina Public Entities stated that the interests of their respective, uh, contingencies are best served by continuing to engage. The Dragon Corporation is the general environmental engineer and consultant for the remedial uh, activities out at the former Schilling Air Force Base. Uh, Dragon played an important part in developing remedial design phase one, which was submitted to KDHE in May of twenty twenty, and it's a basis for providing the scope of work for this project. Uh, the executive group includes, um, the CEO or executive officer from each, uh, Salina Public Entity, and each of those have reviewed the attached agreement, including Exhibit A, Dragon Work Plan for Consulting Services Remedial Design Phase Two, and have determined that their mutual interests are best served by contracting with Dragon to provide, provide the defined scope of services. This agreement, uh, is written in the same format and model as the previous agreement for the remedial investigation and feasibility study for the earlier phases of the work at the site. Uh, this work plan includes the consulting services for the design, preparation of bid documents, and contractor selection for the treatment tasks. Once that, the design and contractor's been selected, there will be a separate, uh, work plan and agreement for the construction administration and, uh, monitoring for each task. The, uh, Dragon scope of work includes providing, uh, administration and project management activities, a combination of five different treatment, uh, tasks in groundwater plumes A through G, uh, two monitoring events of groundwater and indoor air, uh, management of data, submitting that data to the Salina Public Entities and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and, uh, community meetings, which would include public meetings with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. The estimated time and materials cost is five million, four hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, and this is a not-to-exceed amount, and includes, uh, Dragon's and the subconsultants' consulting services and their reimbursable expenses. The city in lieu of Dragon will contract for the specialty contractors. The cost for that is estimated to be, uh, five hundred and five thousand dollars. This would be similar to what we did for the remedial investigation feasibility study. This allows local companies to, uh, be involved in the project. The project schedule anticipates a design portion of the work will be substantially complete in two years or mid-two thousand twenty-three, and completion of the other scope of work by December of two thousand twenty-three. The cost for these services will be invoiced to the city and paid from the former Schilling Air Force Base Environmental Fund. Um, we have our standard slate of options. Uh, option one is to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Option two, authorize execution of the agreement with amendments, postpone or deny the agreement. Uh, staff recommends option one. This time, the group of people I mentioned previously would be available to answer questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not afraid to admit that this is above my pay grade, what's going on out there. So, um, I guess one of my questions for, uh, Ms. Tasker would be, when we look at the schedule of items to be done, does this pretty much fall within the range that we were anticipating as far as costs?
Uh, yes, in fact, um, the costs that were presented in the remedial design phase one are included kind of as a, a basis in this agreement, and these dollars and these schedules all tie back to that, and if you're really interested, this is the book that ties them all together. So, um, this gives you an idea of the effort that went into the fee development.
That's why I have you and Mr. Rogers sitting back there that keep this on track.
Can you see Tim?
Yeah, I can see him, he's hiding, but I can see him, yeah.
But, that, that's the document that tracks those dollars, but they all tie back to the original cost and schedule that we presented.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
And then, um, the specialty contractor costs, those aren't included in the five-four, correct? That's additional.
That's additional, similar to what we did in the past, they'll be contracted through the city, and, uh, as you may remember from the past, several local companies from labs to boring contractors were available to do that work, which is an advantage to the community.
Any other questions, Commissioner Ryan, or Commissioner Davis?
One, in the agreement with the federal government, were federal government had to review our general plans for how we would approach this, are these pretty much the same?
The, the federal government.
Maybe not in much detail than as it is now.
The federal government basically gave us a, a set dollar amount, and left the responsibility to, to do the job up to us with KDHE having the, or Kansas Department of Health and Environment having the oversight over the project. They're, they're our regulatory agency that checks up on us and will be involved in the review of all of our work plans and schedule and the type of work that we do, so KDHE is the
There were general discussions about different, and I won't even try to describe them, but different approaches to controlling the, the plumes. Some the government liked, some they thought the unrealistic or, or cost prohibitive. This is generally in line with?
This is the work that, that we've agreed to do for the remedial work through KDHE. In the negotiations, the federal government did believe some of the items were either too costly or not necessary, but the work plan that we have identified here is the work plan that KDHE's approved, and they are the regulatory agency.
And then, not to ask the same question, but I think what Commissioner Davis is asking is, we have to follow a certain plan. We entered into an agreement with KDHE, so when you, you say it's kind of like, it's, there's no kind of like about it, correct?
That, this is the agreement with KDHE that we will follow.
Right.
The remedial design phase and corrective action decision, um, and the CAFO that we just recently amended CAFO are all the, what will follow, not necessarily with the federal government, but with the Kansas Department.
Yeah, the federal government didn't like some of those, that's, that's when the negotiations of what they were gonna pay us came in. The federal government didn't, KDHE had to approve our plan, and that's what we have to follow.
That's, that's the rules that we're following, is KDHE's plan.
Uh, the focus of our conversation for a long time was the federal government and settling with the federal government. As part of that negotiation, we got into a very detailed conversation about the different elements. We then kind of broke from that conversation, went to KDHE and said, here's the proposed plan and the budget that goes with it. Before we agree to a budget, we need to confirm that you're okay with the plan. They signed off on the plan, we finalized the budget, and now this is syncing up with that.
The remedial design phase one that went to KDHE, I think in May of two thousand twenty, was a piece of work that met their requirements, and, uh, we felt that we could accomplish the tasks out there for the dollars that we received. That was a trick question, Commissioner Davis, I was trying to follow it.
Well, no, I was just, I, I, I understand, I, we had not had to produce this amount of detail in the previous
Right.
session.
Yes, so, sorry I didn't get right to the point of your question, I had it in my head, I was just struggling with, what answer is he looking for?
Um, any, any other questions for Ms. Tasker?
And.
None.
None, okay.
And I believe Matt Schroder with the Dragon Corporation. And I believe Matt Schroder with the Dragon Corporation would be on by Zoom, and if there's any questions further for him.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Schroder from Dragon? Nope, okay. Thank you, Ms. Tasker. We'll open it up for public questions or comments. Are there any members of the public here or virtually that would like to comment on this issue? Not seeing any. We'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
May I move we authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Dragon Corporation for the work plan for consulting services remedial design phase two at the former Schilling Air Force Base site?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Dragon Corporation for the work plan for consulting services remedial design phase two at the former Schilling Air Force Base site. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes four zero, which will bring us to item seven point four.
Authorize the city manager to enter into agreements for workers' compensation, third-party administration services, and excess workers' compensation coverage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, Natalie Fisher, Director of Human Resources. I have provided a lot of information pertaining to workers' compensation to you. I am going to hit the high points of this, but by all means, if there's anything in the staff report that you have questions on, please stop me as I go over this information. As an employer, the city of Salina is required to provide workers' compensation coverage to our employees, and our approach has been to self-insure. There are two main aspects or components of self-insuring. We contract with a third-party administrator to handle things like paying our claims, filing with the state, and arranging care and paying bills for all of those claims that are related to an incident with our employees, as well as contracting for or buying coverage for excess, which is similar to stop-loss when we look at our health insurance coverage. So the excess coverage is, it's just again like that stop-loss coverage that prevents us from bankrupting our self-insured or workers' compensation fund. Both renewals for both of those services are due May one. So we are going to be covering both the third-party administration renewal as well as that excess coverage. Our current third-party administrator or TPA is CCMSI. We have been with them since 2008. Overall, we're satisfied. They've done a good job. There is the area that we've been a little bit unhappy with, and that was the lack of notice that they provided for our excess coverage, because ironically, the TPA brokers that excess coverage, that's kind of the industry norm. Jumping back to the TPA renewal by itself, we don't have any serious concerns with coverage or service, and the renewal is about a 2.9% increase or $675 annually. When they've provided renewals to us in the past, they look at the past period, and then they average the types of claims and assess a fee, and that's how they come up with that dollar amount. I'm going to transition now again to cover a little more on the excess. When I said we were unhappy with the lack of notice or the late renewal that they provided for our excess options, it did put us in a pinch. I do apologize that we are kind of down to the wire on the renewal, but we felt like we needed more time to look at some of the options as well as make notification to the state because of the unfavorable renewal we have for excess coverage. Excess is based on what's called a self-insured retention, which is again like that stop-loss level. We had been at $400,000 per occurrence, and I'm going to elaborate a little bit, and when we talk about an occurrence, an occurrence could mean a single event or an accident, not necessarily involving one employee. So if we had a catastrophic event and we had multiple employees that were injured or harmed, and that collectively would go toward that stop-loss. I hate to put this out there, but in the event, let's say we had a firefighter and a paramedic in an ambulance, and they were in an accident. There might be multiple claims from that, but that incident alone would go towards that SIR, self-insured retention. And I use that example because, again, we've been at $400,000 as our self-insured retention level since 2013, 2014 benefit year, and we do not have the option effective May one to remain at that. We are being forced. The best cost we can get is $500,000, with the exception of our police and fire first responders. Those are going to be carved out at $750,000. Our workers' compensation insurance consultants, Charlesworth and Charlesworth and Associates, including James Charlesworth and Bob Charlesworth, both have taken a look at this. They did say, yeah, the market is so volatile. It's over the past year, in addition to what's going on in the police world along with COVID. The market is just not good, and many of the other public safety entities are dealing with this very thing. The risk increases then for most employees, with the exception of public safety, from $400,000 to $500,000 for those incidents or occurrences. And then for police and fire first responders, we're looking to go from $400,000 to $750,000. So that is taking on quite a bit more risk than what we are accustomed. Because of that added risk, we wanted to make sure that we had looked at everything possible that we would be able to possibly afford, and we did reach out to assurance partners. And we requested at the consultant's recommendation what's called an occupational AD and D policy, accidental death and dismemberment. Assurance came back and said, based on some of the previous clients that they've dealt with, a much more cost-efficient approach would be to offer a retention buy-down policy. And that would be an option that buys us back to the same risk that we have currently through April 30th or something comparable. And those rates were included in the packet as well. The two different options would add $22,000 to $28,000 of premium per year on top of the coverage for the excess policy. I am going to back up just a little and mention when I said we opted to push it to the end of the month to do everything that we needed to do, along with that is notify the state. We have to file a permit every year in order to be self-insured, and we did that a couple of months ago, and we had received notice already that we were approved. However, when we submitted the approval, we did not have noticed that we were being forced to a higher self-insured retention level. Normally, the state requires 60 days for that to review. I called them, let them know what had happened, and within a day, they got back with me and did give me formal notification that our higher self-insured retention levels were approved, and we didn't have any problems there. So we hope that that helps in terms of knowing what you're considering, that we have everything aligned to move to that higher self-insurance level. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions, but if you are ready, I can move through to what we were looking at in terms of recommended actions, and I'll take these one at a time.
Any questions jumping out at anybody right now?
So according to our consultants, this is something they're seeing nationwide, so.
Right. Yeah, they just said it's, I mean, they also expressed their frustration of us not having more notice that we weren't going to be able to renew at the same level. But they said some are in this, and as they are dealing with renewals, they expect a lot of
Because of the short notice, it really didn't give us the time to go out and check with other vendors, correct?
Well, we did ask that the third-party administrator that brokers for us did solicit proposals from several companies. So they solicited it from five different, and only two responded with an option. The others opted out.
And this was the best one of the two?
Yes. So one of the options is renewal, and the other is basically the same level of coverage with twice the premium. So it isn't that we didn't have any other options. I guess not that staff feels is a viable option.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, so I will start with the action A. That staff has identified the following options for your consideration. Number one would be approve a motion authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with CCMSI for workers' compensation, third-party administration services in the amount of $23,850. Another option would be postpone to a specified date or ask staff to look into additional information or amendments. Or three, to take no action, but it would result in compliance issues with workers' compensation claims reporting management and handling in accordance with the state. And for that particular action, staff does recommend option one. I can stop there, or I can go through the other?
Why don't we just go ahead and take these one at a time? Because they will have to be, and we need to take action on, or we need to take action on action C in terms of declining to authorize the purchase of the retention buy-down property? Or we just, I mean, is it best to have that action on the record?
Well, it's brought to you so that if you wanted to take action, you have an option to proceed. But if you take no action, then that's a decision in and of itself. But we presented it to keep your, if you use the word option again, but keep your options open.
Sorry, I'm getting a little slow here this evening.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve that we authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with CCMSI for workers' compensation, third-party administration services in the amount of $23,850.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with CCMSI for workers' compensation, third-party administration services in the amount of $23,850. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes four zero. All right, action B.
Okay, this is the excess policy that I just mentioned. Option one would be to approve a motion authorizing the city manager to renew coverage for excess workers' compensation insurance with Midwest Employers Casualty Company for two years at a $500,000 self-insured retention level for all employees except police and fire who have a $750,000 self-insured retention level at an estimated cost of $205,086. Another option would be to approve a motion authorizing the city manager to renew coverage with Midwest or excess workers' compensation insurance with Midwest for one year at a $500,000 self-insured retention level for all employees except police and fire who have $750,000 self-insured retention level at an estimated cost of $100,042 to postpone consideration of the proposed agreement to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding other information or amendments you would like to consider regarding excess coverage. That does end for 3021, or take no action, but we would be in compliance issues with the state because our self-insurance is effective for the next benefit year on 5/1/21.
One question. I'm assuming the difference in cost between the two-year and the one-year is more than twice the amount or less than half? So that anticipates that the rate increase, if we did this again next year, would be more than an extra $5,000?
Yes, and that's a great question. I did verify with that, that that was because normally, when we're willing to lock in rates, we have the benefit of not paying more for that first year upfront. But because of the volatility and not knowing what's happened, they anticipate that the rates will go up the next year. And this is where our consultant advised, go ahead and lock in the rates. And if we needed to, or if a review that happens prompts us to want to change course, we could provide the appropriate notice and not be locked into both years.
If rates go down, does it rebate it back?
I don't know if that would be what we would be so lucky to know at this point. If I had that crystal ball.
Very nice answer. Thank you.
If we have reason to believe that the rates have gone down, we could enter into a conversation about, are you really going to make us cancel this contract and enter into a new one? But how we know that is the difficult part.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could take action to terminate the agreement in accordance with well before the next year and ask, or ask to go out to market, find out what they would be.
I mean, that's where Charlesworth could possibly be of assistance to us.
It just does rankle a little bit to get the two-year rate, and it's like, wait a minute. It's $5,000 more than the single-year rate, so.
We'll tell you next year if we did the right thing, right?
Yeah, I will say too, with the I don't want to say competitiveness, but the lack of competitiveness for markets our size, we also have to weigh in the ability to having forced self-insured retentions beyond what they are for two years. We might be looking at increases beyond $500,750 a year from now as well.
Hey, Mayor Hodges, I move that we authorize the city manager to renew coverage for excess workers' compensation insurance with Midwest Employers Casualty Company for two years at a $500,000 self-insured retention level for all employees except police and fire who have a $750,000 self-insured retention level at an estimated cost of $205,086.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve option number one on action B. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan. Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes four zero. On to action C.
Okay. This is the retention buy-down policy options. The options available that we've identified would be for you to approve a motion authorizing the city manager to purchase a retention buy-down policy through assurance partners as listed. In the attachment, reducing the first responder's self-insured retention $250,000, and all other employees $100,000 for a total premium of $28,800. The other policy option would be approve a motion authorizing the city manager to purchase a retention buy-down policy through assurances listed in the attachment, reducing the first responder self-insurance retention $150,000, and all other employees $100,000 for a total premium of $22,000, or decline to authorize the purchase. As I mentioned earlier, there is more risk that we're taking on, but staff does recommend option three at this time, declining to authorize the purchase based on our claims history and how we have trended in the additional premium expense that this optional policy would have.
That was my question, so.
I've just asked a question. At least, I didn't see it in here. Have you ever had a claim that high?
In at least 15 years, we have not. Yeah, I tried to provide a quick summary of really our most expensive claim.
Hundred and sixteen.
Hundred and sixteen, 2012?
Yeah, it'd be on page three. Incurred in 2012, it was about $162,000. I will say that's still open. We have minimal expense that's added to that every year, given the severity of the claim. I will say that's still open. We have minimal expense that's added to that every year, given the severity of the claim of what that was, and I will disclose that was a gunshot wound. But that's knock on wood and anything else we can, the the most expensive claim that we've had to deal with.
Let's hope, let's hope we didn't just jinx ourselves.
Exactly.
Mayor, Mayor Hodges, I move we decline to authorize the purchase of a retention buy-down policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to decline to authorize the purchase of a retention buy-down policy. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, that motion passes four zero. All right. Item eight point two.
About eight point one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, we just.
I like the way you're trying to fly through.
If no one else had noticed.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Hoppick.
Not gonna falter.
Okay, sorry about that. Item eight point one.
Consider recommendations from the Salina Planning Commission to amend the future land use map designation of the property Sling County Jail site to public slash semi-public and to rezone the proposed jail site from I three to PDD Public Use Public Facilities. Eight point one A, first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six zero, amending the future land use designation of this eighteen-acre tract of land from employment area to public slash semi-public. Eight point one B, first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six one, rezoning this eighteen-acre tract of land.
Mayor Hodges, I will be recusing myself at this time due to conflict.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hoppick. Um. I see, I got my, got my packet out of order here, so. When I put it in my notebook, there we go. All right, Mr. Andrew.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Commissioners, this evening you're considering two recommendations from the Salina City Planning Commission. One is to amend the future land use map designation for the proposed Sling County Jail site to public semi-public. Their other recommendation was to rezone the proposed jail site from I three heavy industrial to a planned development district with public use and public facilities as the zoning. I have on the board in front of Mr. Bankston there, just for your benefit, a larger site plan of uh, the proposed layout of the property, but this is a planned development district, so there is a site plan that's being considered along with the change in zoning. Back in December of twenty-twenty, the Sling County Commission approved the contract to purchase an eighteen-acre portion of the Marydale addition from the LaBelle Frick Trust as a location for a new Sling County jail facility, which had been approved by voters in in November. Um, as a first step, looking at the property, the county's jail designers took note of the fact of the way the property was plotted. There was a platted right-of-way for Woodland Avenue that ran right through the center of the proposed building site. And so they filed a petition to vacate that right-of-way. And this body conducted a public hearing on that on February twenty-second of twenty-twenty-one. And he voted to approve the vacation ordinance on first reading with second reading held in advance until there was an approved site development plan for the jail facility that addressed how Woodland Avenue was going to terminate at its east end. And the design options for the end of that proposed dead-end street, I'll address in a little more detail later in this report. So the heavy industrial district does not list correctional facilities as a permitted use. The only district that does allow correctional facilities is the Public Use Public Facilities District. So Sling County has filed an application to rezone the proposed jail site to a planned development district with public use public facilities as the underlying zoning district. Um, that zoning designation would be more compatible with the public ownership and planned public use of the property. In this case, the architects, Trinner H L Architects, has submitted a development plan that shows a roughly a hundred and fifty-three thousand square foot building that is proposed to house a new three hundred ninety-two-bed jail facility plus new administrative offices for the Sling County Sheriff's Office. They're also showing some potential future additions and alternates on the plan should the budget and bids allow. So we start with the fact that the heavy industrial zoning doesn't match the intended ownership or use of the property. And Sling County has determined that expansion of the existing facility at its current location is not feasible or cost-effective due to the configuration and the landlocked nature of that site. So they viewed this property as suitable as it's still centrally located and it's accessible from an arterial street. The other thing we would point out is this property's been zoned industrial for forty-seven years and has never been built on. So one thing in terms of impact on neighboring properties, although this is a proposed jail facility, the list and range of uses is more restrictive in the public use district than it would be if this was still zoned. Heavy industrial district and the development standards are more restrictive as well. Um, this was advertised as a public hearing item and opportunity was presented to the public to attend a public hearing, which would not otherwise have been required without this rezoning request. So as far as serving the facility, uh, the jail designers proposing to extend a loop water line that would connect a line in Front Street to a line in Pacific and would loop entirely around the jail facility to provide fire protection. This would be a public line built to city public street standards. Uh, they're also proposing to construct a sanitary sewer line that would connect the jail to a sewer line over in Front Street. This would also be a public sewer line. And to address runoff and drainage, they're proposing to construct a stormwater detention pond in the far northeast corner of the site. So as was discussed at the public hearing on vacating Woodland Avenue, Salina subdivision regulations require that if you have a dead-end public street, it has to be designed either with a circular turnaround or some other approved form of turnaround. So the jail's designers originally showed a secured gate at the east end of Woodland Avenue and no turnaround. But they have now modified that plan and the plan that they have submitted and for which you have drawings in your packet now shows a hammerhead that would be located on county property. And instead of a single gate at the terminus, there would be two gates, one at the north end and one in the south end. And so they have designed that hammerhead so that whether it's a passenger vehicle or box truck or fire truck or ambulance, um, there's sufficient space there for a vehicle to turn around and head back out before they reach the gate. And so the concern was that you might have a misdirected delivery truck that might go down Woodland trying to make a delivery to the jail and reaching the end of a gate, not have any place to turn around and get back out, but they have addressed that with their hammerhead design. So we, just some of the highlights of the proposed building is hundred and one, hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred twenty-four square feet. Most of it is jail, but a portion of it is administrative offices for the Sling County Sheriff. They would have, Sheriff's Office would have a lobby area, offices, conference rooms, training rooms, evidence and record storage rooms and locker room. The jail would have a booking area, kitchen area, medical areas, special needs areas, jail cells and recreation areas. It is designed to house approximately three hundred ninety-two inmates. By comparison, the current jail was designed to house a hundred and seventy-five inmates. And there are, there's potential on the site for future expansion of the jail area. And those are shown in dash lines on the plan. There's a future possible annex building that's shown southwest of the jail that the county may construct if the budget allows. And the plan provides a hundred and forty-five off-street parking spaces. So in in terms of what it would look like or how it would be oriented, it's going to be set three hundred and sixty feet off of Pacific. The public entrance, that what most people will see will face towards the northeast. The public entrance will be from Pacific. The main building will be eighteen feet tall and the jail portion would be thirty-six feet tall. We worked with the project architect to look at staffing levels and determine that the most employees that would be on site in the first shift would be a hundred and ten employees. So they have provided parking for those a hundred and ten employees. We calculate a need for sixteen spaces for visitors. So from the staff's perspective, the parking minimum required would be a hundred and twenty-six spaces and they provided a hundred and forty-five on their plan. Uh, they do plan to have an identification monument sign out on Pacific Avenue to identify the main public entrance. Site is proposed to be extensively landscaped and conforms with all the city's landscape regulations. And as far as the comprehensive plan, right now it's shown as employment land use, which would imply industrial use. The planning commission recommended that the designation for this site be amended to public semi-public because that more accurately reflects the intended public use and ownership of the property. Um, as far as the fiscal note, as far as the construction of Woodland Avenue, that would be a public street built to public street standards. The water lines and sewer lines would be built to public street or public standards and those would all be financed by Sling County. There was a public hearing held on April sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And the county administrator Philip Smith Haynes spoke, as did one of the project designers, Matt Murphy. And at the close of the hearing, the planning commission made two recommendations. They approved a motion to recommend that the future land use map be amended to show this as future public semi-public. And they also approved a motion recommending approval of an amendment to the zoning map to change the zoning from I three heavy industrial to public use public facilities. And the planning commission recommended conditions that are on page ten of your report and those conditions have been incorporated into the ordinance that's in front of you. So you have two potential action items tonight. The first one would be consider ordinance twenty-one eleven oh six oh. And that ordinance would amend the comprehensive plan land use map to show this as future public use as opposed to industrial. Or you could refer the land use question back to the planning commission for reconsideration. Or you could overturn the recommendation of the planning commission and decide that the future industrial designation should remain in place. And then as it relates to the zoning, as a companion, ordinance twenty-one eleven oh six one. And if you concur with the findings and recommendations of the planning commission, you should consider approval of ordinance twenty-one eleven oh six one, rezoning this site on first reading. If you disagree with the planning commission, you could return this item back to them and state your reasons for that. You could postpone consideration this evening to a future meeting date. If there's additional information you'd like from staff or the applicant, or you could overturn a recommendation of the planning commission and deny the application. As to the, um, site plan that was submitted with this, as well as the building elevations, all of those are incorporated into the ordinance that is attached. And so if these two ordinances were approved this evening, then second reading would be scheduled for next meeting on May third. And if you approve of the plan and ordinances this evening, we would also bring back the ordinance that would vacate Woodland Avenue for second reading at that meeting as well. So it's a fairly large project and if I went over anything too fast, please let me know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Andrew. Um, are there any questions for Mr. Andrew? Commissioner Ryan? I don't know. Nope, okay.
I do believe we have representatives of the project. We have a project architect and the county administrator in the audience. I I failed to note that, uh, planning commissioner Haye had asked, um, county administrator about any potential plans for the current facility. And those, those questions were included in the planning commission minutes that were attached to your report. But if you have any questions in that regard, we do have the county administrator and project architect here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Andrew. Any questions for Mr. Smith Haynes or for the architect?
Nope.
Nope. Any ques- thank you, Mr. Andrew. Any questions or comments from the public? If not, we will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move approval on first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash one one zero six zero, amending the future land use designation. Is this designated here, uh, of the property Sling County Jail site to public slash semi-public and to rezone the proposed jail site from I three to P P P D D Public Use Public Facilities.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Ryan here, second.
We have a motion in the second to approve on first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six zero. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, that motion passes three zero, which brings us to item eight point one B, the rezone.
You ready now?
All right, what, there was some conferring going on there. Are we cool?
We're, we're fine. I was just looking at the, the people on the screen, screen and their consultants as well. Just confirming that they weren't a citizen that might want to comment.
Gotcha, thank you very much. All right, which brings us to, um, eight point one B, the second part.
Mayor, move approval of on first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve on first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six one, rezoning the eighteen-acre tract of land. We'll do a roll call again, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, that motion passes three zero and we will recall, um, Commissioner Hoppick and he can rejoin us.
I just wanted to let the applicant and the representatives know that we will have second reading of the vacation ordinance on Woodland at the next meeting, that we have not forgotten.
All right, um, item eight point two.
Application number Z twenty-one dash one, requesting a change in zoning district classification from I one to I two on the southern and western portions of the Tony's Pizza Campus located at twenty-nineteen Scanlon Avenue. Eight point two A, first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six two.
Thank you. Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, mayors and commissioners. This is an application that's filed by FSC Global Supply Chain Incorporated. This is an application that's filed by FSC Global Supply Chain Incorporated, and it relates to their, uh, manufacturing campus out at the southwest corner of Schilling Road and Centennial Road. And as presently zoned, the property is split between I-one and I-two zoning, and that is a, uh, just a matter of, um, history that goes back to nineteen-seventy-seven when the, the city was comprehensively rezoned and remapped. Only the far northeast corner of this block was zoned I-two. And the reason for that and the reason that the planning commission and city commission have been fairly consistent over the years in trying to protect, um, the corridor leading to the Slyna Regional Airport Terminal by keeping that property zoned I-one, which has higher development standards and fewer objectionable uses than the I-two zoning. So if you're familiar with the former Vidrickson's, now Pestingers Distributing that's there on Arnold Avenue, that, that is kind of an example of an I-one development standard where you would have paved parking, front yard landscaping as, as part of that plan. But we now have an application, and the application is to zone, um, the remainder of the campus, which is presently split, so that forty-three acres of the campus is zoned I-two and thirty-four acres is zoned I-one. And so, the northern and eastern portions is I-two. All the property that has frontage on Arnold Avenue is zoned I-one. And so, this application is to rezone all the I-one zone portions to I-two to establish a uniform zoning classification for their entire campus and to establish a uniform set of development standards applicable to their entire campus. So with the current mixed zoning, um, there are challenges for the designers and for staff, um, looking for zoning dividing lines going through the middle of the property. So if this request is approved, all of their land holdings would be subject to a single set of standards with the I-two district with a plan, um, to address future landscaping through a maintenance agreement with Schwann's that is, would, is discussed, um, below. And so, just for the commission's benefit, in the I-one district, on I-one zone property, on any submittal for a building permit, the, the building permit plans must show a plan for providing front yard landscaping along the frontage of the street. And so, what we have is we have a current, uh, building permit issued for the Schwann's project with portions of it having, being subject to a front yard landscape plan requirement and portions of it not. And so, if you were to approve this request for I-two zoning, that requirement for having landscaping on private property would go away. But the plan for addressing that would be to have that there are currently two grant applications that we've received preliminary approval for, for making improvements along the Centennial Road and Arnold Avenue corridors. And as part of those plans, there's a plan for beautification of the right-of-way along Arnold Avenue leading to the airport terminal. And so, the plan is to utilize some of those grant funds to install landscaping in the right-of-way along Arnold Avenue. And as an example of that, it, what is being envisioned is similar to the beautification plan that was recently done on Beechcraft Road. And so, the primary distinction was that instead of trying to find spaces for landscaping in certain front yards on the Schwann's private property, that the landscaping would occur in the right-of-way instead. And Arnold Avenue has eighty feet of right-of-way, so it has more space available in the right-of-way than many of our other streets. And so, having these two different zoning classifications and two different development standards has created challenges for Schwann's design team and also for city staff in reviewing plans. And so, they believe that having this mixed I-one, I-two zoning inhibits their ability to fully plan and develop their corporate campus. And so, um, as far as looking at the surrounding area, much of the property, um, to the east and to the west is zoned I-two. The property to this, on the south side, is going to serve as a stormwater detention area for Schwann's campus. And so, basically, we already have I-two zoning in the area, and this would just be an extension of that existing I-two zoning. So, the plan is to use the streetscape improvements as a substitute for, uh, any private landscaping that would be done on the Schwann's campus itself. Um, there would be no impact on any utilities, the zoning classification's not going to impact that. The change in zoning is not going to impact traffic generation or any of those or runoff or any of those issues. The, the primary thing is if you take, for example, in I-two, there is not a specific height limit. In I-one, there is a fifty-foot limit, and we've had to look at building plans to see if a portion of a building that's in the neighborhood of fifty feet high is in the I-one portion of the I-one or I-two portion. So, having the two different zoning classifications applying to the same project with one being more restricted than the other has, has created some challenges. The planning commission conducted a hearing on this on April sixth, and at the close of that hearing, they recommended approval of the request, um, to go from I-one to I-two on the entire campus, and they outlined the reasons on page seven of your report. Um, as far as fiscal note, the long-term maintenance of right-of-way landscaping would be primarily the responsibility of Schwann's through the execution of a right-of-way landscaping maintenance agreement. And so, we have a number of those, um, currently in place. There's one for the CVS Pharmacy at Crawford in Ohio. If you're familiar with the Quick Shop at Centennial and Crawford, they have, um, landscaping in the Centennial Road right-of-way that's on our right-of-way, but they maintain that. And, uh, there's also, at the location of the Casey's at Magnolia and Ninth Street, they have, much of their landscaping actually is in the right-of-way, and it's maintained through an agreement. So, there is, there are examples where landscaping has been provided in the right-of-way instead of on private property, and that its long-term maintenance is assured through an agreement. So, your options tonight would be to concur with the planning commission and approve ordinance twenty-one eleven oh six two rezoning this property from I-one to I-two on first reading. You could postpone consideration to a future meeting date to receive additional information. Um, you could send it back to the planning commission at the basis of any disagreement you have, or you could vote to deny the application and to leave the zoning as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Are there any questions for staff? Um, any questions or comments from the public?
Sat here this long, you might as well say something, right, guys?
Oh. Mayor Hodges and, uh, commissioners, uh, thank you for the chance. Tim Rogers, executive director for the Slyna Airport Authority. Slyna Airport Authority supports the, uh, the recommendation of the planning commission and the staff recommendation, uh, presented to you today. So, would want to commend the coordination that city staff has had with the airport authority, with the Schwann's, uh, company on all aspects of this for many weeks running here. And that is, you know, from the standpoint of, you know, the grant process and the beginning there and assuring that grants are in place from the Economic Development Administration, uh, Kansas Department of Transportation, and the use of those grant funds and the, the fact those grant funds, yes, can be used for the landscaping along Arnold and Centennial as expected. I think in coordinating with Schwann's and, uh, you know, with the concept of the landscaping within that right-of-way, coordinating with the airport authority on the future plans for the MJ Kennedy Air Terminal expansion and how are the plan, airport authority plans and how things can blend in together and, and come together. Airport Authority will work with Schwann's and support Schwann's, uh, in maintaining that landscaping, just as we are doing with, uh, Slyna Area Technical College in Kansas State, uh, Polytechnic on the Beechcraft Road landscaping, so it gets maintained, it matures, and, uh, it does, uh, provide that, that good avenue and that thoroughfare that we all want to see, uh, on the streets of these, in the airport, at the Airport Industrial Center. So, thank you for your favorable consideration of the request, and be glad to answer any questions that commissioners may have.
Any questions for Mr. Rogers?
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, mayor and secret commissioners. Uh, I'm Chris Wiseman, I'm with Schwann's Global Supply Chain. Uh, I just want to echo what Tim said about the cooperation from the city and, and the airport authority. Uh, there's just quite a lot of stuff going on out there, and there's a lot of coordination between all parties. It's going very, very well. Uh, any questions from you guys you may have at this time? Thank you again for favorable consideration, and if you guys have any questions?
And thank you so much for your patience at this impermanent meeting. I really appreciate you sticking around, and we're excited for your project. Thank you so much. All right, are there any questions or comments from the public? I don't even think we have, I don't think we have anybody from the public who's represented on the Zoom meeting. So I'm going to assume not, and bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor Hodges, I move, we concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve ordinance number two-one dash one-one zero six two, rezoning this property from I-one to I-two on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one-one zero six two. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye, that motion passes four-zero. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. All right. We've got a couple of executive sessions, uh, potentially scheduled for this evening. Is there any, uh, before we get to those, is there any other business that, uh, commissioner would like to, to bring before the governing body? I don't have anything either, so... I guess we will move on to...
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Yes, go, go ahead.
I knew there was, uh, I wrote a note to myself. Uh, I don't need an answer tonight, but a citizen asked when there are tournaments at Bill Burke. Uh, I've noticed that very often there's a charge for parking in the parking lot. Is that part of the agreement, you know, that the sponsor has to raise funds, that they use the city parking that's usually otherwise free?
Um, when you say raise funds, yeah, that...
Well, I mean, they charge, like a baseball tournament.
Correct, as, as they reserve the facility, they have the ability to charge admission. And given the configuration of Bill Burke, it's not very conducive to have a, a controlled entrance point that you walk through a gate, many other tournaments, you'll park, and then you'll walk in to a controlled entrance, you know, they'll, they'll charge admission there. Bill Burke is so spread out that they charge as you enter the parking lot.
Okay. So it's not a parking fee per se, it's a admission to...
No, it's more of a tournament fee. I mean, if you think of, if you think of a basketball tournament, you would park and you'd pay the admission fee when you walk into the, the building. Many baseball facilities have a four-clover leaf configuration where there's one entrance point and they charge admission there. Our configuration is very scattered, and so, the most practical way for them to charge admission fee of any kind is as they're entering the parking lot.
All right, thank you.
And I thank you for asking that question, because I'd written this down. I wasn't sure if I was going to bring it up under other business or not. I did have an inquiry about what happens, um, how are, how are our agreements structured with, um, entities that rent Dean Evans' facility, the, the Berkeley Family Recreation Area? Do we receive a portion of the gate, or is it a flat reservation fee for, um, fields? I don't necessarily need an a- an answer tonight unless you've got it off the top of your head, but that was a question that was brought to me, so... All right, so we have, um, a request for executive session, economic development? And how long do you think that that will take?
My best guess is twenty-five minutes.
And do we need to precede that with a short break?
Yeah, in addition to a break, I think we might need a little technology time, so you might give us a little bit of an extended break.
Are we staying in this room?
Uh, no, we're going to...
We're going next door, okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, mayor, I move the city commission recess into an executive session for twenty-five minutes that would start at seven-thirty-five to discuss the subject of financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation based upon the need to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B-four. The open meeting will resume in this room at eight P.M.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to move into executive session for twenty-five minutes, returning at eight o'clock. Um, I guess we'll do a roll call since we're, part of us are here and part of us aren't.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Uh, he's muted.
Aye.
Aye. Mayor Hodges?
Aye, that motion passes four-zero. We'll see you back in here at eight o'clock. And who all will be in the executive session?
Uh, staff, uh, will be myself, Mr. Bankson, Jacob Wood, Lauren Driscoll remotely, and then the, uh, business.
Are we going to make Lauren stay out here? I'm sorry.
You look like you're still on the screen. Um, and then the, uh, representatives of the business.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Ryan, you, you will get an invite to join the breakout room. And you just click join, and it should let you in.
Yeah. One of you may, and talking.
Okay, I can do that.
Does this say this is in the main building?
Yeah.
I can't recall if I said, but no action is expected.
Oh.
And to take after that executive session and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes three zero. So cold.